Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the January 27th Workshop, School Board of Manatee County. We are now going to be holding our exempt shade meeting in order to discuss safety and security pursuant to the Section 281.301 Florida statutes. This shade session is closed to the public. The meeting is exempt from the provisions of FS 286.011. It is closed to the public. Attending the exempt shade meeting will be school board members Richard Tatum, Cindy Spray, Gina Messenger, Chad Choate, and Mary Foreman. Cynthia Saunders, Superintendent of Manatee County Schools. Stephen Die, School Board Attorney. Mitchell Tidelbaum, District General Counsel. Doug Wagner, Deputy Superintendent of Operations. Paul D'Amico, Chief of Safety and Security. Patrick Bartholomew, Director of Safety and Security. Sheriff Rick Wells, Manatee County Sheriff's Office. Julio Jordan, Manatee County Sheriff's Office. Stanley Schaefer, is that right? Stanley Schaefer of the Manatee County Sheriff's Office. At this time, I'll ask everyone else who is not listed there to leave and we'll close the meeting to the public. All public address, the PA, etc. recording devices will be turned off.
Worth coming just for that.
Right, over there by.
Okay, so I am closing the shade meeting and reconvening the workshop back to the public as they come on in. And as I know Ms. Means needs to get some things together for the next presentation, I want to bring an idea up to the board here for the agenda for the day. Mr. Chapman has called in sick. He is not here. He is obviously the main resource that we look to when we do our policies and updates with Neola. He's the one that with the information that we use. So with him not being here today, I, my, and I just want to throw it to you all, we can see what we want to do. If we want to continue it, we can. My suggestion would be to table this until he's back for the next workshop and fit it into the next workshop because he's our main source of information and the one that works with Neola, etc. So that would be my suggestion. and the one that works with Neola, etc. So that would be my suggestion. I don't know if anybody else wants to to say yes or no to that, or what?
I'm good with that.
It's the chairman's purview, but it looks as if the pu- the the public hearing isn't until March 28th. I mean, it seems like we'd have time.
We have time, right.
To do it. But are you only talking about that, the the thing at the end, which is bylaws and and policies? Or?
Yes, I'm talking about, yes, just the review and board discussion proposed amendments by bylaw and school policies. Yes, just that last portion.
Okay.
Obviously, it says, I mean, Mr. Chapman's always been the one that has done that and he's not here. And so I just feel like, you know, he's the one that typically answers questions of how we're revising, etc., with statutes. And with him not being here, I just I feel like we can push it back to the next workshop. I'll just go down the row and just see what everybody thinks.
I'm I'm good with that. I I read through it and I think we'll find it out.
Ms. Foreman, what do you think?
Yeah, one, there's one item on there that I was the board member that requested it.
Okay.
And it's not, there's no, when you look at the board, the materials, it's not item, you know.
It's not like a Neola change or something like that.
Right. And and actually, there's no change. You know, they just gave us the, it's policy 0165.1. I would like to discuss that one.
Give you that one? Okay.
And then, at the same time, I had I had asked for a revision to, this is a Financial Oversight Committee charter, and was asked to wait until we talk about policy. I don't, I would like to at least talk about my my thought on that. And then, even though it's not really a policy, it's it's.
Were you, was that part of the agenda today?
No.
The citizen financial?
No, I was surprised because and I understand.
So that's something we could?
It was going to be in that portion, that part of the discussion was going to be in that policy section. But Ms. Foreman was going to talk about it in during that time block.
So those two items, I would like to.
To keep?
To keep.
Okay.
I just wanted to have a quick discussion. We talked about it in some comments and we decided to maybe move it to a workshop about how we respond to emails and just trying to come up with a little work method so that we don't all have to respond, five of us, to everybody that sends an email. If we remember, we talked about that and it was part of my comments in an earlier meeting and then.
Yeah, I remember the comments and stuff.
And we said we'd talk about it at a workshop. So a policy discussion seems to be, even though it's not a policy, it's a work method.
A procedure, yeah.
Some time for us to do it. It's either now or. So I'd like, the point is, I'd like to keep that on the agenda without having to go through all the policies.
That's fine. I think I think I'm okay. I'm I'm fine with the discussion, the two discussions that, I mean, as long as we're not getting into, again, statute stuff that we're we're debating without him here, and I don't think that is, and I don't think that one is either. So I'm okay with keeping those two. That's fine. Is that, was that enough time, Ms. Means? Did you get everything ready for the presentation? Okay, okay, perfect. Alrighty, so we are moving to budget review with Ms. Sellers. Thank you. And and I will say, and this is, this is, I know, I know what you're going to present. It's like a 30,000-footish view of what the budget and and how that, how it kind of works and where where it comes from and that sort of thing. Yes.
I think you skipped public comments.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. Sorry, Ms. Sellers. That's the second time in a row. I did that Tuesday. It brings us to public comments. We have one public comment. Deanna Brinkley.
Morning.
Morning. We spent this last year looking for and talking about transparency and debating what is right and ethical. Teachers and parents were divided, confused, and emotional. Together, we all had to deal with the situation that had many interpretations. In order to address the confusion, emotions, and narrow the divide between the parents, teachers, and school districts, the state stepped in to give guidelines in hope of clarity. Clarity is the only answer to confusion and chaos. During the last meeting, Mr. Tatum asked for clarification in multiple ways to a memo that was sent out to principals. On January 23rd, a memo was sent out to all principals by Dr. Lori Breslin addressing the state's new media training and district instructions for adhering to the law. Mr. Tatum asked multiple times, was there a memo sent out by the district to principals that instructed teachers to cover their books? The continuous reply to Mr. Tatum's request for clarification was no. The district did not tell the principals to instruct their teachers to cover their books. This is what was said.
You will cover up your your books or turn them around to the wall.
Myself or Lori or anybody say ban all the books, remove all the books, cover every book? No, we said we need to have a procedure.
In fact, the memo does state in the very first line, remove or cover all materials that have not been vetted. I think this instruction is pretty clear and does not need interpretation. So what is the reason for this inaccurate statement? The excuse cannot be that they did not know what was in the memo and Dr. Breslin could have corrected the statement at the meeting. I want to apologize to all the teachers for any words indicated that you were over the top, out of line, or fabricated stories. You were only doing what you were told or instructed to do. As things are contentious and clarity is asked by the people in charge and responsible, and as I stand here backing the district on a job well done, I hate to say, I feel we were all misled. What other conclusion can we come to? Again, I want to apologize to all the teachers who are trying to do their job and complying with the law and within the instructions you were given. You have every right to be mad and upset. Misinformation is what widened and opened the wound between the parents and the teachers. We are working on closing them. I hope this can be clarified. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my list of public comments. And I think we will address that later on. So thank you. So now we go to budget review presentation by Ms. Sellers. And also, I believe Gina's here too.
Also Gina. All right, good morning, everyone. This is going to, for some, feel like a lot of information. So today's presentation is going to be an overview of the school district's budgeting process, specifically the revenue funding side of that budget process. Board members are also going to have a training that's going to involve budgets at the Florida School Board Association Conference. That's just going to be in February. And then, the districts are, we're going to have another board workshop over budgets to be scheduled in March, potentially. And then, there's also going to be the district's budget presentation in June, which is going to delve deeper into the district's budget. So so after this presentation, it's not going to be about 20 minutes or so, we'll open up the floor to some questions. So if you could jot your questions down, until then, that'd be appreciated. So, let's see, hang on to your hats. Okay, here we go. How do I page down to the next slide? I'm sorry. I hit page down. Whoops, wait a minute, hold on, let's go back. I think I, yes, okay, sorry. All right, so the total 2022-23 budget for all funds for the district was 1.1 billion. Now, starting at a high level are the major fund types in which the school district reports. The general operating fund in the general fund, then the special revenue fund, the district reports the restricted funds that include mostly state and federal grants. And the capital outlay fund is reporting the capital outlay expenditures. Now, there are other funds, however, these are the main funds in generating the major revenue. All right, specifically focusing on the general operating fund are the day-to-day operations like salaries and benefits and utilities. Within the general fund are major operating categories of funding sources. There's federal direct, federal through state, state, local, and other sources. The state provides the FEFP funding, which is in the General Appropriations Act. And the local funding is the ad valorem, which is the local property tax. Also included in the local funding is the other voter-approved ad valorem taxes because the Manatee County School Board has gone to the voters and received a four-year tax to support the schools, which was renewed in November 2021, and it's a source for just two more years. This tax is not part of the FEFP funding, but it is a part of the general operating financing sources. In regards to the district's operating general fund, highlighted in gold is the FEFP funding that is calculated by the legislature using a formula. This large portion of the district's funding source for operations is actually out of the board's control since the state determines what that amount will be. Highlighted in red is the board's additional local ad valorem passed by voter referendum. The local ad valorem is the one area that the board does have control over. Now, this board's been very proactive in the past to obtain additional funding by going to the voters for the ad valorem tax, which is used for operations, and sales tax, which is used for the capital outlay. They've been successful in obtaining the funding. If the board had not obtained this funding, the district would have had to have made budget cuts. Now, various amounts have been raised from local sources, starting with the gross taxable value of the property in the county. The required local effort, or RLE, is part of the general fund. The capital outlay goes to the capital outlay fund and the .748 discretionary operating and the additional voted operating will be discussed later. 57 million in additional voted operating was raised by the board, which represented 10% of the operating budget, which is a very significant amount. This board gets a lot of credit for obtaining that funding successfully. So the state of Florida's funding program, FEFP, has been around since 1973. The conceptual idea was that the state have a mechanism that provides substantially equal school funding across the state, regardless of the economic conditions of the county or of geographical location. All right, so this is a very big one. So this is the FEFP formula funding. And we have actually inserted in this table the district's 2022-23 fiscal year amounts. So this formula is also going to be taught to the school board members at that Florida School Board meeting. So in a way, you're getting a little jump start, so it's not going to be so cold once you get there in February to see this. So and in the next slides, I'll describe what each of these boxes are for. So we have provided a separate handout for you guys. And so as I explain to the boxes and I move away from this big on the screen, you can refer back to it to see where its placement is as far as as how this formula goes. So the formula starts with the county's student count multiplied by the program weights for the weighted FTE, then multiplied by the base student allocation, multiplied by the district cost differential to equal the base funding. After the base fundings are the add-ons. And there are basically 14 additional categories. The and they're the ones that are in orange after the yellow base funding. Compression amount, ESE guarantee, Department of Juvenile Justice, funding compression, instructional materials, mental health assistance, reading allocation, safe schools, sparsity supplement, which is for the school districts with populations under 24,000, student transportation, supplemental academic instruction, teacher salary increases, classroom supply, and the turnaround supplement. This totals to the gross total, the gross state and local funding. Now, in theory, this is all of the money that the state is going to give to provide within the FEFP program to the district. And of the total dollar amount, come, some of that comes from ad valorem and some comes from the state. The required local effort, which is the amount required by the General Appropriations Act, is the amount the board must levy based on the state's determination, which results in the net state FEFP. The red box, kind of looks pink from here, probation of available funds is not on the original budget. It's adjustments by the state calculated later in the fiscal year. Then the class size reduction categorical is added to the state, to the total state funding. And in addition to the required local effort set by legislature and discretionary local effort, which is the .748 mil based on the taxable value, results in the total FEFP. So referring to your FEFP formula handout, the first component is FTE. That's full-time equivalent. It's the cost of one student for one FTE, which equals 900 hours of instruction. And that calculation is five hours times 180 days to equal the 900 hours of instruction for one student. This is the maximum amount of instructional hours that the state will pay for each student. Some districts, some school districts have scheduled students for more hours to prevent makeup days from having to incur due to instances where, for example, hurricanes cause school closures. But the state will only provide funding for 900 instructional hours per student, even if more instructional hours are given. The program weights are provided in the General Appropriations Act. The weights are based on the legislature's determined amount that they have calculated it will take to teach a student. For example, state provides for more weight to students in the K through three category since it will take more time to teach them. Students categories categorized in the ESE level four and five are also weighted more because they are highly involved students. Base student allocation, BSA, as we'll all refer to it off and on through the discussion, is the starting point for the funding model for the school districts. The Florida Legislature determines this amount each year in the General Appropriations Act. Now, this is the summary of the district's base student allocation, BSA, and also shows the effect of the district's school differential, DCD, on the district's actual student base allocation. At the bottom of this slide is denoted for fiscal year 2223, a high of 1.0523. That's Collier. And the low, the .9187, is Lafayette. The district cost differential is a three-year revolving average, which is the recap computed, which is recomputed every year. It is a Florida price level index and it uses an amenity adjustment. It's essentially what it costs to live in a particular county, including housing costs. The district cost differential is the percentage of the base funding that each individual district actually will receive. This is a modification to the base. This is a modification to the base funding, which is out of the district and board's control and part of the funding formula. In this example, Manatee will receive .9937 for every dollar included in the BSA, while Sarasota will receive 1.0153. Base funding. The FTE is multiplied by the program weight resulted in the weighted FTE. The weighted FTE multiplied by the base student allocation multiplied by the district's cost differential arrives to the base funding. The base funding is a combination of state funding, which is primarily sales tax, and the local revenue is derived from the property taxes. The state legislature determines every year the amount to be raised statewide through the property taxes and state revenues. It's important to note that the board does not get to have a voice in this determination of the FEFP formula. The state legislature determines this amount. Now, everything after the base funding are add-ons, which are the categorical or earmarked programs. The Florida Department of Education determines the required local effort, or RLE, millage rate that has to be levied to generate the required local share. The district must impose the established millage rate established by the Department of Education in order to receive the state's share of the funding for the district. The base funding, for base funding, the districts have higher, sorry. The districts with high property values will generate more funding than the districts with lower property values. This is the part of the formula that conceptually equalizes the funding to the districts. For the districts, local taxes, for the districts that local taxes cannot generate the dollars it needs, there's room built into the formula where some of the state funds are reallocated to make up for the difference. If the district is property poor, they will receive more state funding, and the district that is property-rich will get less state funding. Now, this slide is a comparison of the district's peer counties in regards to state and local funding. So, enrollment-wise, they're about the same as Manatee. Lake and Marion are about 50/50, but look at Sarasota. They are only eighteen percent state-funded because their local property taxes, tax amount is higher. And Collier County is about the same as Sarasota. The property values in Sarasota and Collier are higher than Manatee, while Lafayette is significantly lower. Funding is a combination of state and local sources. So, again, counties with high property value get less state money, counties with low property value get more state money. The discretionary taxes is the addition to the required local effort. It is calculated by the state for every single county based on property tax values. This is the area where the property-rich counties get more money. So, the adjustment called the .748 mil compression is provided to those counties that are below the state average. If a county does not meet the average, they will get a supplement to get to the average. If a county is above the average, they will not get a supplement. Manatee was better than the state average, so they did not receive the .748 mil. But on a high note, Manatee did benefit by keeping the amount that was above the state average. Categoricals, and this is a bunch of those orange boxes after that, are now called earmarked, and they are spent on specific programs with restricted uses. For example, the class size reduction cannot be used for anything else. The legislature can create or eliminate these programs at any time. Unless the flexibility has been given by the legislature, the unspent funds must be carried forward by the school district into the next year to be used for the same purpose. So, for example, textbooks. The district may decide to not spend their earmarked funds in one year because they're planning to carry it forward to the next fiscal year for a bigger textbook purchase as part of a planned retirement cycle in the following year. Now, the categories, the categoricals are meant to be spent on specific purposes. However, they are not meant to fully pay for those purposes. So, referring to the FEFP formula that had the district amounts on it, you'll notice there are four, below four of the categorical orange boxes. In red, we have the amount that was actually spent during the last fiscal year. Now, this highlights that while the state provides funds for those earmarked programs, the cost of that program is more than the state provides, and it is up to the district to pay the difference. For example, while the state provides about nine million for the student transportation, the district's prior cost of the program was fifteen million. Same issue with ESE. The state provides twenty million, but it costs the district thirty-four point six million in the prior year.
Mary, I think, are you saying you don't have that? So, if you go, if, hold on one second, let me tell you where the board, so the board can know this. If you go into the presentation through the agenda, the boxes that are on there, the red is under those boxes, see that? I just clicked like the presentation.
No, I was just asking for a printout.
Printout, okay.
Printed copy.
So, yeah, so if there wasn't a printout, you can just sit there and watch this. Did you find that? So, if you go into the district's, on the agenda, and click on that, the presentation she's showing is there.
Yeah, it's okay.
And then you can stay on that page that she's referring to in the red.
Right.
Yeah, if we can get a printout, that'd be great. Was it not?
Yeah, that's what I was looking for through my packet. I'm like, okay, where's the printout?
We didn't have any.
Right, okay, it's okay.
Sorry, Michelle, go ahead.
Alrighty, so anyhow, so going back to, so same issue with ESE. The state provides twenty million, but it costs the district thirty-four point six million last year. So, that was fourteen million more in just that one category that the district had to find, might find funds more that the state did not provide for that program. Let's see, the total state funding equals the gross state and local funding less the required local effort to total the net state funding, which is a total of a hundred and thirty-eight million for this district for the 2223 fiscal year. And then adding the class reduction allocation of fifty-one million brings us to the total state funding of a hundred and eighty-nine million for this district. So, the district's total local funding is the required local effort plus the .748 mil discretionary local effort, which equals two hundred and thirty-one million for this district. The total state funding and the total local funding equals the total FEFP funding, which totals four hundred and twenty million for this district for the 2223 fiscal year. There are additional resources to the school districts that have to be voter-approved, and this school district actually has both of them. So, the board went to the voters for additional support, and the voters agreed. So, this district's board had been very proactive and, active and proactive in going out and getting these two resources. These are the only significant avenues available to the board beyond the FEFP funding from the state for general operations that the school district has. And the additional ad valorem, this district started in November 2021, the one mil, which is generally used for operating, and that sales tax, which is generally for capital. So, at this point, I'm going to turn the floor over to Gina Malinak. She is our budget director. She's going to discuss the district's budget cycle timeline.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, the next few slides, they're going to reflect the budget cycle, which basically starts in January and ends in September. In January and February, as you can see from this slide, we focus on staffing because that's the largest part of our budget. We use student FTE projections to build our school-based allocations. So, then in March, the legislative session begins. It's scheduled for March 7th this year. And we continue the process for budgeting by meeting with department directors, reviewing their spend, their spending and staffing requests. We assign average salaries to the school-based allocations to come up with what we think our salary budget will be. Then in, excuse me, then in April, we provide these allocations to position controls so that we could start our hiring process. We review material budget-changing requests from the department managers with the deputy superintendents and the superintendent. And we also look at any staffing request changes that they might have. In May, the legislative session is scheduled to end May 5th this year. And we receive very preliminary FEFP figures at that point in time. In June, we also, we receive the preliminary tax roll estimate from the Tax Assessor's Office. But it's important to note, we still don't have the required local effort at that point in time. So, using that information, we try to start a budget roll-up that we can share with the superintendent, you know, knowing we don't have final figures yet, but that's the best information we have at that time. Then in July, we get extremely busy in the Budget Department. We receive the Certificate of Taxable Value from the Tax Assessor, and our trim process begins. We receive the FEFP second count and the required local effort in the month of July, usually mid-July. And that's, we then adjust that rolled-up budget accordingly based on those final figures. We also go to the board, and we receive approval to advertise the tentative budget to the public. And then we schedule a board meeting where the board can approve that tentative budget and millage. Okay, in August, we look at our, at the ten-day count. We retake a look at our student FTE at that point, ten days into the school year, and we make adjustments to the budget based on those school-based allocations at that time. Finally, in September, the board adopts the final budget and millage at a public hearing. And then the final budget is sent to the Department of Revenue and the Florida Department of Education. And so, basically, our time period ends. But, you know, it's important to note, you know, the budget is continuous, as you know, as you review the budget amendments every month. Okay. Questions?
Ready for both questions, right, for, on both things we discussed? Perfect. And I would say too, this is a really good start to it for what, I know the new board members will go in a couple of weeks to the, to the actual two-day budget meeting. So, this is a really good kind of start, a head start to it. I want to, I just want to say, I know they're probably, it'll probably be from the new board members. I don't want to get too far into the weeds with some of the ques, just because we're going to be, you're going to be learning this, and I'm going too, but we're going to be learning this really in detail for the next, or in two-day, for two days. So, just keep that in mind. I mean, there's going to be tons of questions. You know, especially for two new board members that have never seen this presentation and the twenty-seven boxes of confusion. So, so with that, we don't have the grain that gets up. So, I'll just start, actually, we started this way first, that last time. Although I'm a gentleman, so ladies usually first, but we'll go Mr. Tatum this time.
Okay, thanks. Good morning. That was good.
Good morning.
Getting ready to dive into the deep end here on all this stuff, so. I just want to make a correction real quick. I know you're new, Ms. Sellers, and I think most of the millages are four years. But in this county, it was only three years this time.
Oh, was it?
Yes, because we wanted to align it with a presidential election cycle, just so you know. And I know you're new. Okay, so if we could go to, I believe it's page five or maybe slide five. I'm looking at a PDF presentation. It headed, it's the ad valorem included in the general fund. There's some pretty gold stars on there. Yes.
Yep.
We were there and then we weren't. There we are, yes, thank you. So, amount, can you explain the columns? Amount to be raised at ninety-six percent and amount to be raised at a hundred percent.
So, you know how when the tax rolls come out and people can pay in advance and they get a discount on it? So, even though you could get a hundred percent, odds are some people are going to pay ahead of time, so they don't have to pay, they can take advantage of their discount. I think that starts in like November. So, it's, sometimes it's best to err on the ninety-six percent side so that, because you're probably not going to get the whole hundred percent because some people take advantage of that discount. So, that's why it's there at the ninety-six percent.
Aren't the numbers exactly the same, though?
In red, in, well, sorry, and so, the, so the very top, the blue, the taxable, gross taxable value stays the same no matter what people are paying. But if you notice, the ones in black, in hundred percent, ninety-six, those actually are different because of, because of.
Important number is the bottom.
Yes.
Ninety-six percent is less than a hundred percent. At least, that's what I remember from math class. Okay, I got it.
Yes.
I was looking at the wrong number, so that's why I'm asking questions. Okay, that's good to know. Then, while we're on this, since there are different levies here, so I remember watching some of the videos from previous meetings, and we were talking about, there was, there's a levy that we can levy as a school board. It's not the millage, and it's not the sales tax. There's something that we can levy ourselves. And can you, can you explain that levy to me and what the process is? I remember we had to have a certain level, otherwise we didn't get money from the state.
Right, right, right. So, that's that bottom row. The additional voted operating, that's that one mil. And so, so that's, that's the ninety-six million that, if, that the board went out and sought to get that from the voters. So, that's an additional item that we get to add for the operating funds. The district gets to add to the operating funds to use that actually would not have been there if we didn't, didn't have that voter approval for that particular revenue funding.
Maybe it's the, I know what the, I know what the one mil is. That's the millage that the voters voted on. I guess it's, so we have a tax millage, that's the 1.5. And we have the additional voted operating, that's the 1.0. This discretionary, .748, is that not something that we as a board decide among?
No, that's, that's a part of the FEFP formula. And that is one that is, that .748 is set in the General Appropriations Act.
Okay. So, why does it say discretionary operating then?
That's the name of it, but the state tells us what we have to.
Discretionary means where we can, we can spin.
Right, we, we don't, we don't set that taxable value, though.
No? Am I mistaken in remembering a discussion about, we, we could lower this tax rate that we set. However, if we don't do that, then the state won't give us our money.
You are correct.
That's the required, that's the RLE, that's that line, that's the 3.274.
Okay.
That one we, that the district has to do in order to get the state funding.
But, but on this other one, the state give, they give you that number. Unlike the county commission, where they can kind of adjust or set their taxable rate. Really, the state gives all the districts. Really, the state gives all the districts theirs.
The .748, and, and that.
Yeah.
And the 3.2.
I know, 1.5.
Yeah, they give them all. We, we really, the only real discretion that you have is if you're doing the capital sales tax additional one or the millage tax. The rest of them are really given to you.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Let's see, we could move to page nine, please.
Program weights.
Program weights. So, ESE towards the bottom there, the second, and not career technical, but right above it. So, so basic student allocation. And then, when we have a child or a student who is at an ESE level four or ESE level five, then the state provides for an ESE level four, 3.674, times the base student allocation for each one of those students. Is that how, is that what that means?
Yes.
And then for a level five, we get 5.401. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what that means.
And Mr. Tatum, those would be students in predominantly self-contained, profound students that had severe disabilities that need a lot of support, smaller classes, multiple adults assisting them generally, so.
Okay, maybe some of our contract schools is where you would find some, some of the.
Could be some. Also, if you look at our access classroom over at the Harley site, those would be deemed, our Bullock site at Rogers Garden, those would be students that would fall in this category.
Okay, thank you. And then I heard you make the comment that we can carry over certain funds in certain buckets of money, so to speak. Is that true of most of our buckets of money, or some of our buckets of money, or all of our buckets of money?
Most of the earmarked buckets of money.
Just the earmarked buckets of money, which are some part of.
That was, so if you go to the page seven, you could, well, we have some other orange buckets too.
Go to page 21.
21, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Categorical programs earmarked, as those listed there.
Are you changing that for me? Oh, thank you. You were doing that before too, weren't you?
Is that what, is that what you're referring to, the earmarks there? Those categoricals?
Yes.
So, those can be carried over?
Yes.
So, if we don't spend all of our money, we can just keep it in the account and the state doesn't come and take it back from us? Is that what that means? Are there other times when the state will come back and say, hey, you didn't spend all your money in this bucket? We're, we're taking the money out of the bucket and. I know, when I was doing federal budgeting, that, that was typically the way it was. If you didn't spend your money, it comes back to us and.
I think that that would be more federal grants. That would change their minds and decide they're not gonna do it anymore and, and could take some of that funding back in.
But the Florida state will, doesn't come down, and if we do a good job and for whatever reason we've saved some money and we can carry it over to the next.
Yeah, no, what they could choose to do is get rid of one of these particular categories. But if you already had that money put in there, that would be still yours to use until it ran out.
Okay, great. And then, transport, you said, I was curious to hear those numbers again. The, the required money that we have to do for transportation, so what is that amount? And then how much do we get from the state?
That was page seven.
So, that was on page seven and the student transportation, this state gave about 9 million in, in that category. But last year, 15 million was spent on student transportation. So, the district ended up having to make up the difference in their operating fund for that.
So, that was approximately fif, six million, $6 million difference. You said nine to 15, is that right? And where did I, where can I see those numbers again?
So, on page seven, it's up there and you can see the little, in red, right below each of those boxes. Just to give you perspective, that, that the state does give you buckets of money specifically to be spent on. But that's, for many of these areas, it's not. We chose to put the most material ones up to highlight, give an example.
And the red, the red underneath shows what the actual cost is, the.
In the prior year.
Yeah, the dark, and the, the dark orange box shows how much the state gave us and so then we can.
Or 22, 23.
We can calculate the difference.
And, and see, right.
If I go back to my math skills, although that's why we have calculators now, right? I don't have to.
Well, a big one was, was ESE, the guaranteed. That one was 20 million given by the state, but only 34.6 was the actual cost to be able to do that program. So, that one was the biggest one where the district had to make up 14 million to get to, to achieve that goal.
Okay. And the last question I had, and I forget what slide it's on. The amount of millage, the amount of money that we are receiving from the millage, do we remember what slide that was on? It would have been helpful to, yeah, it was towards the front.
At four.
Was it four?
Four, yeah.
Four, okay.
Okay.
Thought I saw some numbers, like 51, 59 million or something, maybe.
Was it the 57, the local ad valorem?
Okay. I see it.
Is that percentage, I'm sorry, I'm just wondering too, the percentage to the right is the percentage of the overall budget that that is being used for?
That is being used for, so that's why I mentioned, this is, this 10%, this local ad valorem was 10% of the budget. And this was the one item that the board was able to get for the district to help make us, or the district have its operation cost covered.
When you say 10% here, that must be 10% of the operating budget?
With the general fund?
Of the general fund, not of the overall budget for the year, right? Okay, because that includes capital outlays, right?
Right, right. So, we're just focusing on the general, because we're trying to just get, give an education on the operating, operating fund.
That's significantly, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but significantly more than, the 57 million was, I think, when the, I'm just thinking about future, previous years, it was down in the 30, we were calculating like 40, 45 million or something like that. And it, I guess that's due to increased property values, would you say? Probably why that number has gone up, okay.
You have more houses being.
Yeah, more houses being built too, that's a good point.
That's true.
Okay, but then we have inflation to go along with all that, so, you know. Things rise. Okay, those are all the questions I had. Thank you very much for a good presentation.
Just real quick, before I go to Ms. Forman, if you have anything, I just want to make sure that I know if I'm correct on this. When we talk about those earmarks and Mr. Tatum brought up a good point, like, let's say, I'm looking at page seven. So, let's just say that, like, that mental health assistance, 2.39, you know, if we only spent 2 million, can we take that 399,000 and put it towards the ESE that was there? No, right? So, the district says it's in that bucket, it's in, or not the district, excuse me. The state says it's in that bucket, you can't move it out of that bucket.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make that, you know, because it's, this is not like your personal finance where you said, oh, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm spending $100 on gas, maybe a month, I don't know. And, and not only spent 90, now that 10 can go to my entertainment. That's not how this works with the budget, right? I just want to make sure I was correct on that and that everybody else knew that too. Thank you. Great, Ms. Forman, any questions?
I'm, I'm just gonna ask one question. It's not that I, it's not that I'm concerned about the, you know, have other questions, but for the sake of time, the student FTE projections, who makes those projections? How is that done?
This, this state?
For us?
Myself, Mr. Sauer, and we work with the state. The state will give us some of their tentative projections based on a formula. But then we have to factor in all of our growth and our, we, we tend to go back and look at a three and five-year average based on that and trends. We factor that in and then we make a projection. I will tell you, for whatever reason, the state has not met yet. They've not set a date yet on their projections for next year. So, we are going to go ahead, my team, and we're gonna come up with our formula so we can begin our process. And then we will adjust if we need to adjust. But usually, we do a pretty good job of estimating, because that's what it is.
We do.
The beginning budget cycle.
I recall prior years, way back, that we did not do a good job. And there are penalties associated if you get it wrong?
Well, there's not penalties per se, but what happens, that projection is how you're funded. And they don't give you a check for the whole year out of the gate based on that. So, it's where you start and then based on your enrollment in August, you adjust. But you get your first calc from the state. They really capture everything in October. So, if you under-project, you do not receive the money for the first semester. They have to recalculate that and you never get 100%. If you over-project, they cut your money and you're not given all of the funding that you thought. And you cut and then you have to reduce your staff. So, is it 100% science? No. But over time, you can get pretty accurate. And if you're not accurate, it does impact your budget because you could maybe not be receiving all the revenue you need. Or it could be that you've hired too many people than what your students calculated and then you have to cut staff.
To the board, we're gonna be losing our math whiz over here. And maybe we want to add questions about that on, on our superintendent search, you know. I'm, I'm worried about it.
Maybe she can be consulted.
In Alaska.
If, if, if they have cellphone coverage where she is, yeah.
But, you know, we, we do have a team, but it, it is, it is a very important part of the budget cycle, as Ms. Forman stated.
Like, when you, it's you and Mr. Sauer and the state, do you work with the local, you know, with the county to say? Like, what, what anticipation of.
Right.
Growth is there?
You know, Mr. Penley and team are already, you know, in there anticipating housing and so forth. So, we have a projection of building units and so forth that we factor in. And then we look at the trends of people moving also. And then you look at the birth rates and so forth. So, it, it takes into many factors. But you, you try to anticipate, you know, three to five-year trends to come up with a pretty similar projection. And of course, when COVID hit, you know, there are anomalies that happen that you, you just cannot forecast. But, but there is a team of people involved, so.
Thank you. Ms. Pr.
Couple of questions. Slide five. You talked about the sales tax somewhere, maybe it wasn't on page, on slide five. So, if we wanted to say reduce a millage, could you increase the sales tax? I don't know if we're asking that of a county or a district. Meaning, there's different buckets you're telling me, from page five, slide five.
That sales tax that we went out for voter approval was a 15-year, but it can only be used for capital. Whereas the millage is an operational.
Right.
Tax. So, one can't be utilized, you know.
For the other.
For the other, I, okay, all right. And you're saying that the, on slide, wherever it was, 59 million we've collected?
That's page five again.
Yeah, was it page five? Yeah. For the operating voted millage. And to Mr. Tatum's point, when this was initially rolled out, it was projected that the district would raise around 34 million for this. Ended up being around 37 or 38 million, if I'm correct. Maybe, I might be wrong by a million or so for the first year. Then the second year, it jumped into the 40 millions. Then I think the third year kept in the 40s. And now we're into the fourth year of this, I believe. Am I correct in that? Am I writing the math in the fourth year of this?
Well, it never stopped back.
Right, it's not stopped, but we're, now we're up into.
This is the fourth year, yeah.
Right, this is the fourth year. So, the projected amount initially was in the 30, my point being is, it started out as being told to the public is gonna be around 34, 38 million dollars. Now we're up to the $59 million mark, clipping 60 if it was 100% level. And that's not counting all the growth that we're getting in the next. If any of you watch the county commission meetings and all of the units that they're building out east and out even west, they're building a lot of units. That number is gonna go even higher because of the property taxes that are gonna be assessed. So, I can, I'm concerned about that number. I know it's a big chunk of our budget, but I'm concerned about that number getting, I mean, you got discretionary operating at 44, the added voted millage at 60. You know, at what point are we gonna be using that solely for all of?
Remember, this is a presentation of the revenue side.
Right.
So, what is causing the increase that you're seeing, that's seeing the increases, the property values?
Right, that's my point.
This presentation is not showing the, the rise in the expenditure side that is comparable to, because those costs are also increasing to, to meet that need. So, so, when we do a full presentation instead, that also shows the expenditure side. It'll, it'll be more apple to apples as far as revenue against expenditures versus just taking a picture or a review of how the revenue has changed each year because you're not reflecting, looking at a net effect. Because you're, I know, but you're conveying that, but you're getting so much more money, but the costs are also increasing at the same time that we're not presenting here today.
And on slide seven, we're projecting, or according to this slide, the FTE student, you're saying 51,737,07, the top yellow square. That's the number of students, correct? Am I correct in assuming that? Okay. Does that account for charter schools or is that just total public?
Yeah, charter schools.
Charters are into that dollar amount.
The district money and the, the district sends that money over to charter schools.
Okay, the district sends it. So, Manatee School of the Arts gets money from us, plus they get money from parents to pay for their student to go there, correct? Am I correct in assuming that?
No, they get state, it's a public school, so they get money for us, but they probably also do fundraising, grants, and they have other revenue streams. But they do get, they are part of that 51,000 student number. So, all the money that they're allowed to receive from the state comes into us and then we submit it to them.
Okay, so that brings me to a question. Out of all of this data, going back to page, I think, five, does any of that account for grants that we've written? I, I, I don't, I guess page five, yeah.
That would be in the special revenue fund.
Special revenue?
We're presenting here today.
Okay, all right, because I'm, I'm just looking at an awful lot of money here, plus all the monies we've set up here and approved for different grant funding that we brought into the district, which is all good. But this is kind of like a slim version of what we actually bring in, plus we're adding the grants.
This is just an overview today.
Okay, all right.
And it honed down, first told you about the major ones, but then we specifically just went over into just the operating, which is the general fund. Now, remember, those grants, those have specific purposes for those, that when, when grants are received, it's not into the general operating fund. Those have other programs that those are going for.
Right, I have a lot of questions about grants and all of that later, but for this presentation, that's basically what I had for that. But March 7th legislative, okay, you said that the legislators, the board can't say to a legislator, this is what we want, but we can have people lobby for that and say, we want more money from the state. How can we get it? Because I think education should be the number one priority because you can build all the roads you want, but if you don't have the people here to drive on them, then we're not gonna have kids here. So, I would advocate for the legislators to give every district more money for educating our kids, especially with the reading rate that we're at, so.
And that's our number one.
That is our number one ask, yes.
For us right now, typically.
More money.
I think it's been the number one for that season's time here. I'm sure for years, probably just copy and paste it.
So, it's one of those, you gotta be the one to yell the loudest to get that money, so I'll be yelling the loudest. So it's one of those, you gotta be the one to yell the loudest to get that money, so I'll be yelling the loudest, trust me. So, okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Ms. Messenger, anything?
Um, yeah. Just a couple of things. Um, there was a comment about being able to retain the money in certain categoricals. And sometimes that really benefits the district to do that because there are things that, um, for instance, the one I think about is instructional materials. When we have to adopt a set of new instructional, instructional materials, what is allocated for one year may not really suffice. So the district might end up saving over multiple years, knowing that, oh, in five years, I'm gonna have to buy a whole new curriculum for K to five reading or whatever. So that is to our benefit that we are able to do that, especially in those circumstances. Because if we had to spend it in one year, we'd be end up piecemealing some of those big buys that we have to make. Um, one thing I've asked in previous years, and I've never really been able to be given the, the number that I'd really like to see. Under this class size reduction one, fifty million dollars, I'd like to know how much we go over in that one. I know there's really no way probably to calculate that, but we are legally mandated to have certain class sizes. And there's no way that the fifty million dollars really covers that. There's just not, that, we know that, we know that's factible. But we really can't ever seem to calculate what that would really look like because that's really, that's really how we build our whole entire program is based on the state law, which far exceeds the fifty million dollars that were given in order to follow that state law. So if you come up with a new way on how to calculate that number, I would really like that number. Because I feel like you, you said, you know, ESC was, uh, mm-mm. It's that one. If you could calculate it, it'd be that one. Um, but if you got away, I'll take it. I've, I've asked for years. I'd love to see that. Um, there was also comments about being able to move money from cate- categoricals. And there are rare exceptions where this board has done that. It comes from, um, I forget the special document. I think even Mr. Dye wrote it for us.
Well, you'll be getting it again.
Oh, no.
It's a categorical flexibility that is a statute.
Yeah.
Uh, we tend to bring it if we need to in May. And uh, you're probably wondering, well, why would you do that instead of just continuing to roll it in the existing bucket? We have two buckets this year that we have some money that uh, will not be spent in those areas. One is instructional materials and one is SAI. Uh, it equates to about two and a half billion dollars. And they give you the ability, if you don't spend it, to, you could roll it in some cases in there, but you can also move it into your general fund. And you say, why would you want to do that? Well, the general fund, you have more flexibility than you do in that categorical. You say, how in the world could you have money left over in instructional materials? Well, back to Ms. Spray's question about the grants. We had a lot of ESER grant money this year that we were allowed to purchase a lot of materials with. If you don't spend your grant money, they do take that back. So it was to our advantage to use that money in some ways to pay for some of these categoricals. So if we have some of those monies left over in the categorical, it would benefit the district to move those into the general fund at the end of the year instead of leaving them there. So you, you are correct, it's not frequent or, it, it, you know, you, you have to assess it at the end to see what's in the best interest. But there will be a little bit coming back in part because of the ESER dollars that we were allowed to use to pay for things that we didn't have to use all of those categoricals for.
Yeah, my main point is I just wanted the board to understand that. You can do that. It's just a really rare act. I, I think in my six years sitting up here, I think we've done it three or four times. It doesn't happen all that often, but I just wanted the board to know that. Um, that it's, it's, doesn't happen often because you really need it all where it is. You need more than what that is, but that's why it doesn't usually happen, but every once in a while it does. And I just wanted to make sure that, that the board knew that, 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 that can't happen. It's just a rare act. Um, the, this fun formula here, this is done every single year, is that correct? So if the legislature were to so choose to reduce any of these or remove any of these or change the base student allocation, we would then be subject to those changes every single year, correct? The millage lasts how many years?
Okay.
Three or four, right?
Max.
The last one voted.
Max, max.
My, my question or my point really is, there are people that believe that the millage lends itself to insecurity for our budget and for our employees. And the point I want to make is that this is more insecurity than the millage. Our voted on millage actually is more secure than our budget is every single year because we know we're going to have it for three or four years. Whereas this, we don't know if we're going to have it every single year and it's subject to change every single year. The millage is not. Our voted on one mil is guaranteed because the voters supported it. Um, there were comments about coming from the state level rather than a local level. And I understand that and I can appreciate that. Um, but the benefit of the one mil versus it coming from the state is the local control. Um, we, when we do that, can have a say. Yes, we think we want to value paying our teachers more, we can fund that. We want to value STEM, we can fund that. We want to value arts, we can fund that. The value of that is, we get to hear from the community whether they support it, number one. We get to hear from the community where they want it spent, number two. And we get to have the control of doing that, which is local control. So to me, there's a lot more benefits of that one mil that I just want to make sure are heard and recognized. Um, because I, I hear a lot of things um, in the community um, where there's been some misinformation spread and I really want to make sure that it's really clear, it not only adds more security for our budget and for our employees and for our teachers than the state budget does, but it also allows for a lot more local control. People can reach out to us and say, you know, I really think you should look into funding whatever. And we can go, oh, well, maybe that's something we consider in our next millage funding. We can change that, we can work on that. Those are things that we can hear from the community and respond to appropriately. Not to mention, it is ten percent of our, of our budget, you know, and I, and I, I do hear the concerns of, oh, that's grown. But so have the needs, which you said. I was going to say that. I really appreciate you saying that because the needs have grown. Not only has the community grown, yeah, the houses are coming, guess what? So are the kids. I mean, I live out in parish, so I used to have cows in my backyard and this is, this is, this is, they're all gone. And uh, and, and they're tearing it all down and they're gonna build houses and I, you know, that's the way that it works, right? I get it. But we have to react to that. We have to plan for that. We have to fund the teachers. We have to fund the programs. We have to make sure that the reason why they want to build, the reason why they want to come here is because of our school system. And it comes from us funding it. And that only help, not only helps our kids, it hits an economic driver in our community. Um, which is why the Chamber of Commerce has also supported that millage. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that I said those things um, and hit that home. Because I really appreciate this and I really appreciate the funding and that, pointing, pointing out where all the funding comes from. And um, I, I will say, I remember specifically when I went to those finance classes, and I don't know if that was the first one or the second one that I went to, but they go specifically into that district cost differential because that's a big contentious point with the, the state, is the district cost differential. So if you've got questions about that, I, I don't remember if that was the first one or the second one, like I said, but you will hear a lot about that one because there's a lot of opinions about that one specifically. But that, that's it. Thank you so much.
I don't have anything else. Thank you very much uh, for that presentation.
I have some more, more questions. One thing that I would like to have explained to me, so I know when we put the millage forward, that there were certain percentages getting, given to certain categories of people. So I think fifty-one percent was to go to the teachers, nine percent to ASME, twelve percent to charter schools. So we have a base level salary for, let's say, a teacher, right? But if it, if they're receiving a percentage of a pot of money that is either shrinking or growing, how, how does that equate with, well, but you have a pay rate? You see what I mean? Like if I was getting ten percent of the proceeds of my stock and my stock kept going up, then my salary would get bigger in theory. So what happens when, when the millage money goes up from forty million to fifty million? So the, so fifty-one percent of fifty million is more than fifty-one percent of forty million. What happens to that, that money? Or how do, do the teachers get more pay in that situation?
They do. Uh, it's divvied up in a supplement for all those that are, that are receiving uh, their portion in that category. So yes, they get an increase.
Good. And the other point I did want to make is, and I want the public to be aware as we start talking about the budget, that these ESER funds have been a hundred million dollars over, how many fiscal years now approximately have we been receiving?
They end in twenty-four, so uh, what, two and a half, three years?
Approximately three years. So that's like thirty, thirty-three million dollars a year we've kind of been living off of extra, so to speak, which is, that's general operating fund money? Is that, is that?
No, they're grants, but you're able to, but based on what the grant language stated of how to spend it, it does supplement your general operating budget. It definitely does.
I guess what I was trying to say is it's operating money, it's not capital.
Correct. That, that is correct. Al- although you can buy some equipment, some technology and so forth. You can't use it to build a building or buy a bus or things of that nature. But you can buy computers.
Right. The point is, we've been using about thirty million dollars a year, which if you took the general operating fund, which is five hundred and fifty million or so, that's about, what, not ten, ten percent would be fifty million, so maybe six percent or something like that. And so when that money goes away, that will be a significant hit to the way we've been operating. And so we're gonna need to keep that in mind as we talk about millage rates and what we want to do the next time around and for twenty twenty-four, that this, this fund is gonna be going away. And it's in six percent or so of the operating budget will be sucked away from us in the fall of twenty twenty-four.
And Mr. Tatum, I'm glad you mentioned that because um, uh, this next school year is the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The ESER funds expire in the fall of twenty-four. So uh, when we build the staffing plan this year, you will start to see some reductions uh, because we will need to start scaling back on those added uh, items that we have paid for uh, because of those federal grants that, you know, if our budget is not able to continue those services, they will expire.
So I'm thinking a little farther ahead, maybe in the communications area. How, can we start communicating to the, the staff that, what, what's going to happen here in the sense of unfortunately, maybe some positions? When you start hearing about the budget and this is why, and so it's not a surprise to them and they understand why the, why these things are happening. And as we develop a budget plan, then a communication plan to explain why some of the things that are gonna be maybe potentially unfortunate are, are going to have to happen and, and why they're happening. That was my thought.
And, and to that point, I would hope that that communication, I mean, the ESER funds were there for extra things that they, the government believed we needed because of COVID.
Right.
And so I believe, I mean, I would, I, that, when, uh, because going back a year or so, that when those extra things, Mr. Tatum, you're hired because we need XYZ position because of this ESER, they were told this is only lasting for X amount of years. So from the, from the beginning, I think that communication was there, and I'm, I'm not the one communicating, but I'm pretty sure if I'm right in that.
That is correct. Uh, and when uh, we start uh, giving out this next school year staffing plans, anything that could be scaled back because of some of those limitations of funding will also be conveyed and communicated and so forth. But, but I, I'm glad you brought that point out because we will start to see some shifts in what we were afforded because of that extra money in the last few years that will expire.
Will, will there be things such as classroom teacher assistance, paraprofessionals, that maybe a teacher who has organized their classroom in the way they do business and that person will not be available anymore or?
Uh, I, I, we haven't begun the process yet, but um, you know, uh, there will be starting, we will have some changes. There were extra staff positions created and added for support uh, because of those ESER monies. So some of them could be scaled back this year, but we have not started the process yet. We have to start with a forecast number. So, but in the next couple of weeks, in February, we will have our draft allocations. So we will begin.
Were those, and were those new positions, is there a certain area where they were? Like, were they in the classroom or were they for?
Some were uh, supported the classroom, uh, some were uh, affected mental health, uh, behavioral situations, um, substitute situations. So yes, uh, many of those will have impacted uh, the day-to-day operations of the schools.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one more thing.
Ms. Forman, add her in.
Alright, go ahead.
Um, just, I know you're brand new and, but um, maybe three, four, five months ago, uh, Mr. Barjaron put together a calculation of the ESER funds of what is being used for recurring expenses. You know, we are using non-recurring revenue for recurring expenses and um, he, at that time, he said he would report to the board quarterly. So you're overdue.
Okay, alright.
I thought it was like fourteen million.
That's a joke, yeah.
I remember that, I remember that slide.
It was, it was.
And they showed it like fourteen million, like.
No, it was more like thirty or forty, I thought. Gina would know.
I mean, some of those are positions.
Yeah, yeah. So um, so I, I think it's important that the board have that in front of us frequently.
Okay.
So that, uh, so that we're aware of that. Also, um, on the uh, topic of property taxes, um, uh, I recently had someone who has been in their house for five years and they're saying, look at these property taxes for schools. And so before I responded to him, I went back and looked at his property tax bills, which are available online. And all of the increase was because of the increase in the value, okay? And because we have a cap on how much the value can go up. Existing homeowners have a ten percent, it's a ten percent cap. But when you look at our property tax rate and what the state allows us to change, uh, charge every year, that is actually less than the ten percent. So um, so actually, as far as a percentage goes, everybody who has their home eligible for this, um, then uh, they're actually paying a lower rate. The higher dollars are because the um, uh, because the, the value has gone up. But um, what's, I'm sorry, I take that back. No, they don't pay higher dollars. They actually have lower dollars if you compare year to year. Where, where the people are getting hurt are those who do not qualify for that because they're not, they're not homestead. And um, for the brand new property, you know, brand, you know, the first year, you're gonna, you're gonna get really socked with uh, with the high values. So uh, I just found it interesting, you know, as a, throw that out there, that actually pay less in property taxes to the, for schools.
Ms. Pr, you say you had something?
Yeah, just one more thing about the ESER funding and to the budget process overall. To Ms. Messenger's point, we're able to carry over funding and that kind of thing. And I understand ESER, you cannot. That's why when the ESER dollars comes before us, I'm so adamant at focusing on more of the reading aspect, the writing aspect and the math aspect than any other program. Because we're only gonna get those dollars for a certain amount of time. Let's make full use of them to what I think the intent in, intent was to bring our kids back up to a level where they had lost their educational value. And using monies outside of that core principle, in my opinion, is, is a, you know, misuse of funds and just me um, saying that. I just think that we should focus on that, um, on the ESER dollars more so than other programs. And everybody wants their um, program to be funded, I get that. But I also know that we're so far behind on other core academics that we should be looking at that more so than anything. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. With that, we're gonna do a five-minute recess.
Thank you. I was gonna ask that.
All right, let's call us back to order. And item number two on the workshop today, the discussion of the procedure for media center materials. Dr. Breslin, I know Mr. Chapman is not here, you can come on up. This is just further knowledge of what we spoke about on Tuesday. Although Tuesday feels like it was.
A month ago. A month ago? Yes, absolutely. Uh, so here to talk about media center materials, um, in particular, the suggested procedures that the board will need to vote on in February regarding the library media materials. Uh, and then of course, I also want to address additional questions with classroom libraries, um, as I'm here. So in your materials, you'll see the presentation that I will go over, the reconsideration for procedures, uh, as well as the training from the Department of Education on library materials. Uh, all of those were in the attachments. So first, let me go through the media center policy, uh, not policy, procedure. Let me, let me use the right language. Uh, generally, Mr. Chapman, there it goes, uh, is one that would introduce a procedure to you for vote. And so per the state statute, they do ask that the board vote on a procedure. And they do use the word procedure specifically. And so we know the timeline, but just to review, um, when we uh, first saw House Bill fourteen sixty-seven, we did set up the district committee. We held all committee meetings in the sunshine, as you can see stated there. Uh, all minutes were taken, posted on our website to be very transparent through the process. We have had um, thirty book titles sent in using this process. And those have been reviewed. And there's also attachment in there uh, on those reviews. Um, the DOE released the training, as you're well aware, and we're presenting this updated training or process, procedure. We were going to do it on the thirteenth, uh, but it got bumped to today in hopes that on the fourteenth, we could have a vote. I know you're very familiar at this point with House Bill fourteen sixty-seven and the requirements that um, books must meet in order to be available to our students. And the requirement that all elementary schools must publish on their website in a searchable format, a list of all materials in school libraries. And we definitely know by now that that also includes classroom libraries. Here's that first page of that training. And again, I encourage anyone uh, who is interested on more information to check out that training um, from the DOE. Uh, it walks everyone through the various uh, statutory requirements. And so the procedure, as you'll see, um, and it continues to allow stakeholders to submit concerns in the district website. Now, in your board materials, you'll see a copy of, of what that looks like. Um, most, well, I think all of the uh, concerns have been done using the link on our website, but anyone could do a paper copy as well if they would rather do that. Uh, the curriculum department receives these, uh, and we immediately look to see where we might have the items that were requested for review, uh, and we contact those schools. So uh, originally, we were holding district meetings, uh, and the schools did feel a little lipped out of the process. And so we changed and, and rewrote the draft procedure. And as you can see now, it comes to us. We contact the schools. And then the school principal uh, has the ability to work on their campuses to review the challenged materials. We give them the information. And within thirty days, they'll report back, if this is the approved procedure by you all, they'll report back to me and then I'll report back, or someone on my team will report back to those who submitted the review. At that point, uh, we will notify all schools with that material. Uh, with the school decided, if they objected to the material, then all schools will be notified of that fact.
Dr. Breslin, where was that? Is that in our presentation that proposed?
Yes. Uh, so you have um, in your board materials, the SDMC library media material reconsideration procedure? Yes. Mm-hmm. And then you've seen classroom libraries and I will get uh, to that. Uh, you saw this slide on Tuesday, but we'll have conversation more about classroom library. Uh, but first and foremost, I want to know if there's any question specific to the procedures we're looking at for reconsideration of materials, if there's an objection by uh, any of our stakeholders. Ms. Forman?
Yeah, I've got several. Um, as far as the procedure goes, um, for clarity for the public, could we make item number one be the informal, the informal discussion with the school? Um, the way I kind of see it is that we've got three levels. You start with the school, then you go to the district, and then you go to the board, you know, if there's. And so I would, I would really like to see it laid out that way. Um, so step number one is go to the school, talk to the superintendent, uh, talk to the principal. You may or may not have to fill out a form. I don't know if we want a form at that point, but it's something to consider. Then level two, district, would be the request for reconsideration.
If they're unable to resolve at the.
Right. Uh, because I'd like to see it not reconsideration right out the gate, which is kind of what this, what this procedure has. And then number three, the board level, that would really be an appeal. And I would think we would need a process for the appeal, which would include um, that the board should review the recommendation from the principal along, uh, along with the materials. And um, we need a form for it because we don't want to escalate because of a verbal disagreement, you know.
It's a suggestion to add an additional form if the decision is made at the school level. Uh, whomever submitted the original request to the school would like it reconsidered at a, at the board level. We would have a form for that.
Right. Um, then number two, um, oh, I have a question.
Yes.
If um, the person complains, okay, because there is a requirement in the new law that we report to the state every year what complaints have been filed. If it's only at the school level and it's, and you decide you don't want a form, you know, I'm embezzling on that. But if they just go to the principal and say, this book needs to go, does that get reported?
So we report directly from the district office. So unless there was a way, you know, if the, if the principal contacted me and said they had a complaint, that's why I like the link, uh, because then I know immediately if there's a concern and then I can take it to the schools, I'm aware. And then I can make sure all schools know of the concern. Um, but, but yes, we would want to then, most likely, um, it looks like we're going to be reporting uh, these items to the state. And so I want to be able to take those steps and make sure I haven't missed anything.
Okay. Um, okay. Then number two, um, the form, I was looking at the form that's in there. Um, where the person is reporting what they disagree with. Also, I like to see, I, I'm happy to see, have you read the book in its entirety?
Yes.
Um, because I think that's, uh, there's just so many books that are, titles are being tossed around. So if someone's going to file a complaint, um, I like, I like that. Um, would, I don't know if there's an appetite for this, would we want to ask the source of their knowledge? In other words, did they hear about it from a student? Did they hear about it from um, a website? Did they hear about it from a peer review? Um, did they hear about it from a publication? Did they hear about it from social media? Um, you know, I don't know if we want to do that or not, but it's something to think about. Um.
On the form you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then uh, under final outcome, um, a number four on that list, on that form, um, what would you like the final outcome to be for this library media item or items? Um, I would like to uh, see a, an addition there, remove it from classroom libraries, you know, that if somebody, that's, if that's what they're hoping for. Um, okay. And then number four, um, number four, Roman numeral four, um, it says the principal or committee will determine the extent to which the material meets the criteria. We don't define a committee.
Right.
So that needs to come out.
That, so uh, that meant the committee on the school campus was what that was? Um, but we could certainly leave it to just the principal and then however they deem appropriate for their campus, they can.
Okay. Well, if there's, if there's a committee, then it would be part of the procedure in number one under the school. You know, where the principal, you know, can, can create a committee. And then, and then in that case, um, in that case, there would be a committee.
Okay.
So I'd like to see that. So, okay.
Mm-hmm. Good point.
Uh, number five, Roman numeral two, um, communicate the school decision to the community stakeholders. Um, can we be more specific on that is the, I assume that we're, the intent of that is to communicate the school decision to the complainant?
Uh, and at, at large, I mean, we spoke about um, with libraries and purchases of library material to make sure you're running it through your SAC organization. And so just continue that. And that SAC organization, parent organization is comprised of, you know, you have your business partner, you have your parents, faculty members, uh, in the secondary level, often a student representative. And so just communicating that out, like we reviewed this book. And so there's, so there's communication on what you're acquiring and then maybe what you might be weeding.
Okay. Because somebody was uh, commenting about the process where it was gonna go to a SAC committee. We're not sending it to a SAC committee for approval. We're just communicating this happened in your school.
This happened in your school. Uh, uh, but the uh, purchases of materials, it is advised that the purchase of new library materials be reviewed by your SAC committee. And that was part of the DOE training.
Oh, okay. Um, all right. Then um, number six, uh, board shall review the recommendation of the, oh, um, when, if it comes to the board for a review, um, I would ask that you add a thing in there that. Um I would ask that you add a thing in there that we review the recommendation of the principal and or committee along with the materials.
Okay.
And then, like I said, a form to escalate, so that's what I have on, on the uh.
A form.
Those are, that's my insight.
Thank you.
Anybody else we don't have?
Hello, Dr. 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 Rosen. Do you want to go ladies first?
No, go ahead. You're probably going to ask a lot of the same questions I have, so.
Potentially. So the, it says the, well, actually, I wanted to address Mr. Di real quick and maybe Mr. Tittlebaum. Do you have any sunshine concerns about this draft and how it's being the draft at all? No, okay, because when I hear the word committee, I start to think about if we're going to refer a book to a committee and.
If I may, the committee itself would be subject to sunshine, but not necessarily the draft, the draft itself.
So my, I guess my concern is, you know, the principal, he, he gets a book and he says, okay, I'd like the, it's a history book. And so he brings on his four history teachers and they sit down and they have a meeting. And out of that meeting, you know, they decide the book is not going to be, we're going to take the book out or we're going to keep the book or whatever that is. And someone says, hey, that's a committee. That's got to be a sun, you got to do that in the sunshine. I don't know, is that, is that a concern?
And and I'll certainly rely on on legal and um and Mrs. Saunders uh for this input, but I was under the understanding if it was not a district decision but school-based, that that didn't necessarily have to be held in the sunshine. I.
I also, I concur with that.
Okay, good.
Like because of the way the statute was written, it gave that particular authority.
That's great, and it's good to know. I hate to think that every meeting in a school now about curriculum or books has to become a sunshine.
It would be very difficult.
Okay, yes, and then so your role in this is as a director of curriculum. What is your role under, I guess, number five there? Do you have any kind of decision-making authority or are you just a facilitator of information?
Uh facilitator of the work and, um you know, once we, we've re-reviewed this, um you know, we can turn our attention to the books that have been reviewed and talk about what your preference is for parent consent and things of that nature. But as the information comes into the district office, I need to make sure I'm working with schools to, to give them that information. Receive uh the input back on what their decision was and make sure our stakeholders receive the answers that they're requesting.
Okay, so I know there was some discussion at one time of maybe just having this responsibility lying with, with you as a director of curriculum. But it, it appears now that the formula is that the principals will have the primary authority. And that that is not resolved at that level at the local school, then it will eventually come to the board through the process as described.
Right, and that better um aligns with the, the language from the state where the principals do have uh the authority over the libraries.
Okay, good. So we, so is this a good point to talk about like books in Destiny or do you think that, are we, can we move on? Can I ask those questions now or are we going to move on to that at a different time?
What, what do you mean? I don't know what you're.
Well, like, so like, so there are, like, there are books in Destiny, for instance. Uh my concern is, uh there are books in Destiny that are probably there already, but when you go back and look at the criteria that was given to us in the last meeting about purient material or, you know, sexually arousing or whatever, that like, like Catcher in the Rye and Atlas Shrugged and The Fountain, and these are books that have a lot of literary value. I guess this is again more, more of a legal question too. That some, you know, you take this big broad rule about things and how, how would you see these things, this playing out? Because teachers are, that have been teaching some of these books maybe for years are now concerned if there's like a a romantic interlude at the end of Atlas Shrugged, for instance. You know. But it's, but it's in Destiny, you know, and somebody.
We, we brought coming consensus, one, that um it's, it's meant for committee itself to make determinations of that nature. And if they're approved by the state, it makes it easier as well.
Okay, so if a book is in Destiny, is that considered to be quote unquote approved by the state or, or not? No, not.
Uh if it's in Destiny, it's been approved uh or vetted at some point in time by a media specialist. That being said, um the statute specifically points to uh and harmful to, to minors. And so it's not just if it has a scene, uh you know, how is, what is the literary merit? What is the age appropriateness? What is the readability? Is it harmful to minors? Several considerations to be taken.
In many respects, the way the statute was written, they put a lot of authority within media specialists and the training of the media specialists to be able to vet the books that are going forward to add. It's not just a, a meat, to have um subjective values to it. There is training that's associated with this as required by the state.
I guess I'm trying to get some reassurance for the teachers and maybe we could put out a communication to them about some of the things we're talking about today about you, you know, if you have Atlas Shrugged and there's like a harlequin romance, a little interlude at the end. You know, we're not going to come, as you said before, the book police aren't going to come and, you know, the, yeah. Uh but, and you may think that, you're shaking your head, like that's not going to happen, but I'm just saying teachers have communicated that to me, that they're very concerned about some materials that you look at those, those definitions and there's stuff in, these are high-quality books that have lots of literary value, but they also have some of that material that was on that list of three things we saw last week and that we're not going to be coming for them, so to speak, and we use a lot of discretion.
To add, not, not to cut you off, and I know you may have more questions, but to add to that too is that in your AP books and, and that sort of thing that are, that are obviously approved by the state to be there. If your Catcher in the Rye or et cetera is on, from the state approved for that curriculum.
Right.
Then it's checked off in time.
Uh migrate towards the discuss, discussion of the uh classroom libraries, um a couple of things stick to keep in mind. College-level courses, advanced courses such as your uh AP-type courses. Those are required to have a syllabus. The syllabus is written prior to the year starts. Uh it's uh shared uh with parents, it's, it's a requirement of the course. Uh parents see what their children will be reading for those college-level courses, so those are covered. They would not fall under uh the guidelines of the classroom library for that college-level course. Um so I hope that clears that up.
Or school library.
Or school library, correct. Uh so y- you know, the original intent on the law, from my understanding, not the legal expert, but uh was to give parents uh rights to know what their children are reading. And even if their child's in that college-level course, that information is still shared at the parent level. And so I, I feel very confident that that is, that is covered, that is, we're, we're meeting all guidelines. The original statute, uh one zero zero eight, related to uh items harmful to minors, that is not a new statute, that's not a, that's not loo language. Uh they're just leaning on that uh to help them define what they mean by pornography. And none of those books uh mentioned here uh would meet, in my opinion, uh those guidelines. And so as long as we're communicating with families and sharing what the, the students are going to be reading. Uh then, then I see that we're covered on all angles.
You might consider a town, a town hall with teachers, uh maybe you have, I don't know, you're a smart lady. You probably thought farther ahead than I have about concerns and having this conversation with them that.
Certainly, uh more clarification, communication is absolutely merited.
And then we talked about this last time, I'd like to clarify it again. If I am a teacher and like I said, I have my own personal library of history books because I'm a history teacher and I am reading one the night before preparing for my lesson, I think, wow, this is a great passage, I'd like to read it in class. That's apparently not covered within the purview of what we're talking about.
Teachers resource uh that they're using for instruction, you know, your professional educators, they, they know what is appropriate for their standards and for the age level. And so they can share that. Any type of uh newspaper that might be uh received by the school and shared as a resource in a classroom. Uh again, you, you just uh share that you have those resources available to your students and, and continue that communication that's generally uh seen in those high school classrooms. And then, just to clarify too, between vetting and cataloging for elementary, when we're required to catalog the materials in a searchable format. That is putting it in a list, in a, in a searchable database. Uh vetting, vetting is done uh by a certified media specialist. They're the only ones that can vet. So it should not be posted on our website as available prior to it being vetted or handed to a student prior to it being vetted by a media specialist if we're referring to the library, classroom library or school media library.
And, and I think some of the confusion is, many school teachers have classroom libraries. Some of those libraries are consumed with district-bought books. That came with text adoptions or district-approved items on there. Those are fine, they've already been vetted. They can be accessed anytime, any day, they don't need to be covered up. They don't need to be boxed up, they're already fine. It's, if you have personal books that you bought yourself and you have on a library, a, a bookshelf in your classroom that students can take at will, either, either in class or to take home, there has never been a formal process for that. Those are the books that until it's been vetted and authorized, that those books are appropriate. They cannot be accessible to children.
I, I talked to a teacher yesterday.
But I think there.
There's some confusion there.
There was some confusion because there are many books in a teacher's classroom library that are approved, that have already been vetted. They shouldn't be removed or covered or abandoned because they were bought by district funds. It's what they brought in, that's their own personal possession. That's the only thing in question.
Okay, so I think that, that's a good discussion. I'd ask that Cheryl, it's the, and I have some comments about the public comment and this topic in general they like to make, but I'll wait till we're done with the discussion of the procedure and then at some point, maybe at the end of the.
Before we, in the next.
Before we end, I would like to make some comments about everything in general. Thank you very much. I think you've put together a goo, a good procedure here and I appreciate you coming and talking to us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, a few things. On the reconsideration procedure. Number four and six, Roman numeral six. The question material will be placed with a parent consent requirement during the period of assessment. So students, if there's a book that needs to be reviewed, vetted, whatever, you want to call, label you want to put on it. They can be checked out with a parental consent form. Is that my understanding of that one?
If it's been sent in for reconsideration, uh it immediately gets placed with a parent consent. That means it's uh taken off from the shelf, kept in the school library. Uh if the media specialist has a student that wishes to check out, pick up, read that book, et cetera. They must require parent consent before they're able to hand that book to the student.
Okay. And then you said that media specialists will be the only ones vetting the materials. Because that concerns me. I think, and then again, to the books that a teacher may bring in, excuse me, into their class. That's a concern to me as well. Because I don't think we would have gotten here had every book that's on the shelf gone through a proper vetting process. I spent my afternoon yesterday going through the required training for child abuse, neglect and sex trafficking. So, and a lot of the materials that we're actually talking about is covered under all of this training. So books have gotten into our system and inside a classroom that actually should have not been allowed in, to be quite honest. So that's how we've gotten to this point in our system is because books was brought in. And that brings me even to, you know, video material that can be checked out. You know, is that vetted uh with the uh media specialist? Because a media specialist at one school can have a different opinion than a media specialist at another school. In my opinion, if a book is deemed bad at one school because of some of these topics that we have to take training on, that should be a district-wide book that should be taken off, not just at one school. Okay, okay, all right. But again, I go back to the media specialist, vetting that book may differ between the west side of town and the east side of town. So that causes me concern. And that goes back to my question on committees that was brought up by Mr. Tatum. To me, I think there should be committees, this may be farther down the road in this process, but I think there should be committees that would actually look at some of these materials. So that, having a book that's being reconsidered is basically what this is. It's been pulled, it's been reconsidered, but a student can still check that book out is bothersome to me. I don't think, once it's deemed and uh as being questionable material. I think that book should be pulled and then vetted properly, whether that comes through a committee, through the board, whatever. I'm an author and people have asked me, what would you do with your book? Because it contains some bad things in it. And I've told everyone that's asked me that. I would not put my book on a school library shelf. I did not write that book for them. I wrote that book to educate educators and counselors and that type of thing. So I know where some of this stuff is coming from. And it, it bothersome to me with the amount of emails that I've got that we're having a town hall with a book banning party. That's not the case. All of the people that are employed with us have to go through all of the child abuse, sex trafficking training. And the sex trafficking training even says, some people don't even know that they're being trafficked. Some people in these, and the media specialist may not realize that that book may not bother you, but it may bother a student in another, in another school. So that is my, my biggest concern with this. I hold this topic very dear to my heart because I can see where some kids could get their hands on some things that they don't need to see, to be quite honest. And again, um I go back to years of even my own now college student. College-level grandchildren had required reading that had some content in it and they were in grade middle school. And I questioned that of the parent and the parent actually pulled them and said, I'm not going to let my kid read that. So I was thankful for that, but this isn't not a new topic. This topic has been around for a long time. And again, I, I can't state it enough, I'm glad that manatee, we may take some hits from people in the public. But I think manatee is going to be the uh sample of how we are taking action on this. We're just not going to sit back and allow um some of this stuff to go on in our schools. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh yeah, uh just a few things. Um one thing about the vetting comment. The impression I got from that question um is that yeah, the media specialist has to vet it, but that's not the same thing as what an educator in the classroom does. Because then the educator has to look at that list in Destiny and say, well, this book's not right for my class, or this book's not right for my class, or this one, this is the exact one that will teach whatever thing. I think that's the point that was kind of brought up there is that there's I think there's a concern among some teachers that now there's going to be a, oh, well, it's in Destiny, so it's okay. When there are, there's a lot more to teaching other than that. Okay, great, it's in Destiny, but if it's not appropriate for my students, then it's still not properly vetted by the teacher. I think that was more of the point there, that, at least that's the impression I had gotten from that question. There's a lot more. It's, okay, it's in there, but if that's not appropriate for my class or they're not, it's not on the right reading level, or if it's not the right subject matter, or if there's a lot, it, it, it being in there doesn't mean it's good for everybody.
Agreed. We have uh over, you know, close to two hundred and fifty thousand titles in Destiny and, and certainly the teachers are the experts in their content areas, they know their students, they know their standards, and they choose the resources that would best help students learn and then master those standards.
That's exactly what I think. That's exactly what I think everyone needed to hear. They went to school, they have gone through multiple certifications, they go through piles of training, continually having to keep up their certificate in order to make the most appropriate decisions for their students. They are professionals. We can treat them like the professionals that they are because they've gone through a monumental amount of training to get to that point. I think that was more of the point of that vetting question. Yes, the state says it has to be vetted by a media specialist, and that person has to go through extra training as well that we talked about on Tuesday. But there's even more what a classroom teacher has to do in order to make sure that is appropriate for that class and that student. And I just wanted to make sure that that piece about vetting really got addressed, and I really appreciate what you said because that's the whole point. We need to respect the teachers because they've gone through tons of training about this. Specifically sometimes about libraries and classroom libraries and, and reading materials and reading levels and how it matches the standards and, there's a lot that goes into how a teacher would choose what's appropriate for a student or their class.
Right, absolutely.
Not just, oh, I'm gonna read this today, no, that's not what happens. Okay, I want to make sure that, I want to also say that I agreed with, going back to this reconsideration procedure. I agreed with the recommendations from Mrs. Foreman, the things that she brought up. I just want to make that clear so that when it comes back before us, I support the recommendations that she's making, I think they're very thoughtful and thought out. I have one though, that, she said it, but I just want to reiterate it because I think I want it more forceful than she did in the sense that she talked about when it comes before us, if it comes before us. That her, I think your request was that when it comes before us, that we have the recommendation from the media specialist. Or you, I think you wanted something along those lines, you wanted some sort of recommendation. Or, or, no, that wasn't the word you used, you wanted, whatever they used in order to make their decision, I think is kind of what you wanted. I would like a recommendation from the media center specialist. When it comes before us, I would like that educated professional that got the additional training, that has the additional certification, that went through this new DOA training, I want their recommendation on what we should do with this book. If it comes before us, I want the person that is the most educated professional person in that content area, in that section, giving me their recommendation of what they think should happen. So if that were to happen, I would like that.
Yes ma'am.
Because I don't feel like I would be equipped to make the proper decision for something like that because that is not my expertise.
And certainly if it does come before the board any certain title, all material, including schools input, media specialist input, the reconsideration, original request, all of that would be brought for full transparency.
I'm gonna address a couple other things that I heard were said. There were comments made about how these books are infiltrating our classrooms. I don't think anything we've heard so far about anything you've presented to us has anything to do with anything infiltrating any of our classrooms. And the only concerns that have been brought up are what exists in a library. That does not necessarily mean it was brought into a classroom. That means that a student went and willfully checked it out, or not, but it was sitting in a library, not a classroom. Those are two different things, I want to make sure I understand that correctly. Okay, thank you. And then there, there, there were concerns about the book, whether it gets removed or not if there's concerns. And about the idea of it being parental consent. I just want to make it clear, I support the language that is here. I support parental consent, I think the parents should have a say in what their child has access to. And that is all about parental rights, that allows for that. I support that, and I just want to make that really clear there. I also, just for the record, I've had several people ask me for the statistics that I asked you for on Tuesday. So I just, either you can read them out or I can, because I just want to make sure that that gets put out to the record because there were lots of people that have reached out since then saying, I would like to know that number. And then, and I want to make sure they get that number, now I'm gonna try and find out my email unless you have it. Let me find it.
I don't have it readily in front of me, but I can tell you the, for the total, you have it in front of you?
No, I remember it being like point zero one.
Point zero one percent of our total title of books, titles of books have been sent in for reconsideration.
That's one hundredth of one percent.
And point zero zero four were placed either with a parent consent or, or removed.
So that's four thousandths of one percent. Thank you. That, I just wanted to put them out because I had several people that really would like to know those numbers, and I wanted to make sure the community knew that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Was that it, Ms. Messenger?
I probably could come up with more, but you don't want to hear.
I'm just asking, I wasn't being sarcastic.
No, I think so.
So, yeah, I'll come back to you, let me, so with just a couple things, well, let me start with this. I, the procedure that you've placed in front of you, in front of us, along with what Ms. Foreman has added in, I'm good with. I'm okay with us as a board being the last person to, if it gets to that, which hopefully it never does, but if it does get to us, we'll take the onus, that's on us. But I will say, and I do agree with Ms. Messenger, we are not the experts in that. Like, we can read the book, of course, I mean, I, I, well, I'll be honest with you. I don't foresee myself being able to read thirty titles before a meeting in February to decide if these are good or not, I just, I.
Yeah, it's difficult.
Impossible. So we're gonna have to rely on somebody's opinion. And if the state is telling us that we have prepared a, the policies, procedures, and education form to give to the, to the media center specialists, right? And that's coming from the state. And the media specialist takes that, they learn, they go through all those courses, and they look at a book and they say yea or nay to the book, and it comes back to us. I just don't know how we can sit there and say, you've done the training, I haven't, and no, you said yes and it's still a no. So, and I think we're talking about few and far between books now. I said this before, months ago when this, when this came up and we found some books in our libraries. There are some books and some excerpts in books that I would not be able to read aloud because I just don't feel comfortable, especially in front of women, especially in front of a group of people, reading some of these excerpts aloud, right? That doesn't mean it's not appropriate for a twelfth grader in AP English who hasn't, has a college course. I'm not saying that, but I, but if these books are found in certain spaces, it shouldn't, there's, there's, there's just, some of these are not a question. Which brings me to my point where I think, and I hope this isn't taken the wrong way, but I think we're creating a mountain out of a molehill. Because we're, we're, we looked at the numbers, there's not that, there's, there's, there's less than one percent of books that are inappropriate, that we have found deemed inappropriate that have come through, that we've even reviewed. So I don't think that this is some district wide problem and we're full of all these books and material that, that are absolutely absurd. Now, that doesn't mean we shouldn't take out the ones that are bad, I'm not saying that, right? But I'm saying this isn't some district wide concern or problem. I also don't think in the teacher's classroom, this is a district wide major problem. What I think this is, is that, oh, you find one, maybe it slipped in when a parent brought in fifty books and the teacher just didn't get to reading all fifty books or whatever. We cannot though, we cannot deny that inappropriate things are being taught to kids not at their level and things are happening in schools across the country that should not be happening. I do not believe one hundred percent they're happening in Manatee County. But that doesn't matter. This law was put in place, in my personal opinion, by the governor, by the legislature, to prevent those things that are happening and you see them. You cannot say you cannot, you don't see them, there are bizarre stories out there. And I think this law is put into place to prevent those. This law is not saying you can't teach, you know, we brought up, Mr. Tatum's brought up The Catcher in the Rye, some of these books that, that's not, I don't think that is the intent of this. The intent of this is some of the, the things that we're seeing in books is not appropriate for that, that age, it just isn't. If a book is, happens to be in a fifth, fourth grade class, and it should have been in an eighth grade class, well, hey, guess what? That shouldn't have been in that fourth, fifth grade class. So I think this law is, is, I think we're, we're, I think that the, the problem is, and this has always been the case. I don't, if you have siblings, you've been on a sports team, you've been anywhere, when one person does something wrong, the mass suffer. And I believe that that's what this is. I believe that there's been, there's been teachers around the country that are, in my personal opinion, are doing things wrong, are, are, have inappropriate material in front of kids' faces. And, and the reaction is from, from the legislature, from governors, from people in, that this isn't gonna happen in our, in our schools, and it shouldn't. I don't think we've caught rampant issues in Manatee County, I don't. And I think that's why the frustration from teachers happens, is because they're like, wait a minute. We're not doing anything, now we've got to do this, or we got to go through this procedure. And I go back to what I said, this is for protection. We can disagree, we can agree with what the law says, what, it doesn't matter, it is what it is. Now, we've got to put in the right procedures and policies in place to abide by those and hopefully protect our teachers that they don't get in trouble because they have, happen to have a book on their, on their, on their shelves. The other thing that, that, that we get a lot of emails in this about is, and it's misinformation, that books are gone, they're not gone. It's just on hold, like, if, if there's a title in there, and I did see some titles, you know, and I think Ms. Foreman brought them up about the Boxcar Children Set, which is a great set of books. I read them, you know, almost all of them. So, but some of them weren't in, right? That doesn't mean that it's gone and we're throwing in the dumpster. That just means that it's on hold for X amount of time that we can say, hey, it's good, media specialist can vet it, and it goes in the catalog and it gets right back to the teacher. Maybe that's a week, maybe that's a month, maybe that's three months, I don't know. But it's gonna, we, we know the pain happens in the beginning, it's pulling off a Band-Aid. And that's just where we're at, we're at the pain that happens here at the beginning. And I, I just want to make sure that, that this is all due to other things outside and we're trying to prevent that I believe some of the, the issues and some of the teachings and things like that that are going on outside of, of us in Manatee County, I don't think we have a problem. And I think there is some frustration with teachers, Ms. Messenger brought it up. That's why I think some of their frustration, they are professionals. And, and we have fantastic teachers. But I, but this is, this is, to me, textbook, one person did something wrong, we gotta fix it. And when one person was late to class, the whole group ran, right? One person on your team was, did something wrong, y'all did, up, down, whatever, so. I just want to, I just want to make sure that, that the, the public knows and that teachers know, we're not ripping books away and taking books away. So that, that, I know, but I know that sells. I know that gets the clicks online and the media, et cetera. And I know that's gonna get people riled up, but that's not what's happening, period, the end. And so I'll get off my soapbox there. But again, going back to the procedures, I like the procedures. I think that, that you all have done a really good job with the, the library books, the school library books and doing that. And, you know, I, I will say this. Let me ask you, when it comes to, because again, I don't, I want to make sure this too. We're not taking parent, a parent's right away from allowing their kids to read what they want, we're just not supplying it. So, so, so for instance, if a child wants to go and buy or, or get a book from the public library, or buy it, their parents, whatever, and they walk into class with it and it's their own, we're not grabbing it and throwing it away. It's, it's their own book, it's theirs, I mean, it's, it's, it's fine. So I want to make sure that's okay. I mean, I want to make sure that we, that it's not like, hey, you can't, like, like, this isn't a policy of dress code policy, right? This is, this is just, we're not supplying the book for you, doesn't mean you can't read it. Doesn't mean that if your parent chooses to read it, great. That's their choice, that's their child. We're just not supplying that for them to read. So I want to make sure that's clear too.
Right, that is correct, we're only looking at what's in our libraries. That's, that's it.
Thank you. And the other thing too, I know we're getting this, is, I know you've got something, you wanted to say something as well. We are, we are getting to this, remember, you know, the Department of Education just finished right there in January, what their procedures were to vet it and all that. I mean, we're only like twenty days away from them having their decision on how they were gonna vet and how they were gonna do things. And so we're now reacting to that. And so I want to make sure that, I mean, the, these, we're gonna have some tweaks and changes in what we do. And there may be things we go back and say, maybe we should have done it differently, X, Y, you know, this, done this way last, you know, week or yet last year, we should have done. We always do that, and so we're just at a really new, it's just, it's all brand new. And we're all trying to do our best to move forward.
Absolutely. You know, were there a better way that could have been done? Probably, when you look back at any change, you find ways that you can improve upon that implementation. You know, I was asked, mentioned earlier in public comment, and let me just be very clear, it's not my place to get involved in a conversation between the board and my superintendent. And at the same time, I do reflect, and I do take responsibility for any pain and stress that our schools, my job is to keep the focus on learning. Well, that failed this week, so, you know. But at the same time, you know, I pride myself on my professional reputation. And no job is worth that, being bashed unnecessarily. And so I'll just leave it at that.
Well, and, and I said, and, and I said to Tuesday that it was my decision to push this presentation back to this workshop instead of two weeks ago, on the seventeenth, we, we could have had it then. And I think that that had brought a lot more clarity to what's moving forward, to what's happening, what's happened this past week. I think it had brought a lot more clarity to that situation. And, you know, hindsight's 20-20. I wish now that we'd had this workshop two weeks ago on the seventeenth. And I think on the seventeenth, or maybe it was the sixteenth, whatever it was, whichever that time was. And I, I said Tuesday, I'll take, I'll take that blame and I'll take it today and I'll take it forever. I think that if we'd had this discussion beforehand, and it would have been out in the public, and the teachers, et cetera, I don't think we'd had so much of a reaction what we did. There's still gonna be people that disagree with what we're doing, that's not, that's not the issue. But I think that we could, that, that looking back, I definitely could have kept it on the, on the workshop. And I moved it, so I thought something was more important than, than, than what this was. And that was a miscalculation on my part, and I'll admit it. So, but, and that's the way, we should be, we should look back and reflect, hey, can we do things differently?
Yeah, we constantly strive to improve to better support our schools, that's, that's why we're here.
Ms. Foreman, you had something to add?
Yeah, my earlier comments were about the process for the complaint. But I do want to address the library books. Or the classroom library situation, okay. Some, some of its questions. Is there a state approved list of books?
So the best standards came with a list of grade appropriate reading for best standards, but didn't limit it at that. So, so not, there isn't a state list encompassing all titles for libraries.
Yeah, and, and I saw that for Literacy Week, they came out with a kind of using list.
They sure did.
Including Old Man in the Sea. So, you know, I mean, that's, that was, they're, they're, they're being mocked for that, just so you know. As far as comments made earlier about parental consent during the review. I, I personally do not believe there is any time we override parent consent. If, you know, I have a hard time with removing books that could be restricted to parental consent, you know, and I applaud the library committee that worked to, when they looked at it and said, okay, this is appropriate for this age group, but it may need parental consent, great, you know. I don't always agree with how other people are raising their kids, you know, but. actually, a lot of times, but, but that's another story. Um, but, um, but so for a book to be under, require parental consent during review, I think is the right thing to do. Um, as far as the comment, the book shouldn't have been brought in, I would just urge you to go and volunteer, look at the books, see what's there. Um, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised at, uh, at how good they are. Now, I have a question here on the classroom libraries. The teachers have brought in their books, they may have brought in the Boxcar Children, they may have brought in Little House on the Prairie, okay. Are they allowed at this point to use their professional judgment and go, there is absolutely no way there's something wrong with that book? Um, I'm not even gonna look it up on Destiny, I'm gonna leave Little House on the Prairie in there, based on their professional opinion, can they do that?
If it's in the classroom library, then the law states it has to be vetted by a media specialist, and so, and, and so that, the system of looking at the district list or what's in Destiny, um, proves that that vetting happened along the way.
Okay, but we have a timing issue on this.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so if we tell teachers, okay, leave Little House on, I'm sitting in a conference room going, they're bringing me boxes of books, and I'm seeing Boxcar Children, I'm seeing, um, A Little House on the Prairie, and I'm going, really? You know, but I do look it up and get that, actually, what we're doing, where I am, is we're putting a sticker on it to say, yes, it's been checked on Destiny, and that's a good way to, so that they know, but, um, it's kind of a waste of time at this point. It is a waste of time at this point, let's, let's get the books that they, that the teachers aren't, um, aren't hard over on, or, I don't know.
Not sure about?
And, aren't, aren't sure about, or, um, you know, I'm getting old, old readers, old McGraw-Hill readers. You know, um, those didn't make it to the district schools without having been, gone through a curriculum process. So it, there's a lot of, I don't know, um, the other thing I'm noticing is that, because all I'm doing is looking at it to see if it was in Destiny, and then somebody will come along behind me and catalog it, okay? If it's in Destiny, it's not getting in the, in the pile to be cataloged. You know what I mean? Because, um, I'm in an elementary school, um, if Mrs. Jones in third grade has this book, okay, that may be in Destiny, um, for example, the Atlas Shrugged, that'd be, it's smart kids, um. Nothing's happening with that book. Okay? Uh, you see, my point is that if we're looking at, at these books, shouldn't we be cataloging them at the same time?
So eventually, we hope, and, uh, to develop a, and, and this is something we've been working with our vendors on Destiny and, and, uh, some other outside apps, where we could have a system where we can scan, and then each teacher has a list that this is scanned to your room, this is scanned to your room. Um, not in our inventory, not, but just to make it, uh, really accessible for teachers, and if they have a book, they scan it and add it, but that's gonna take some time to develop. Um, you know, first and foremost, we want, because it's mid-year, and this change ca- was handed to us, uh, mid-year, uh, our first priority was, uh, let's keep as many books accessible as possible. Um, but certainly work to be done to, to narrow it down, and how can we assist our schools with, uh, easily keeping a, a classroom library list available in a searchable format to parents, uh, and so that, that has to come, but you're right, that has to be coming.
That's the ultimate objective.
Absolutely.
But, back to my question, can a teacher, when they're, when they're tossing books in the box to be sent to me, sitting in the conference room, um, can they say, no, I'm gonna hang on to this one, this one's okay, it doesn't need to, I don't need some stranger sitting in a conference room saying, yeah, it's o- it's okay, because I know this book is okay. And the only, the only definition of okay means is that it's in Destiny.
Teachers are, are, uh, you know, they're responsible, they own their classroom environment, and we have to rely on their professional judgment. We instruct them, like, here's the, here's the law that was handed down. Uh, we, we have to make sure it's been vetted by a media specialist, and we have to make sure it's, you know, in our system, so parents know it's there, and we provide them that information, we provide, provide principals that information. Um, and, and then, you know, we leave it at that, I ca- you know, I can't, um, do more than suggest that we follow, uh, the, the law as it was intended.
Okay, you're in a rock and a hard place.
Yeah, I can't, you know, I, um, we work, follow statutory requirements, I work with legal, the superintendent, uh, and, um, and then we move forward with the course of action.
All right. Um, okay, uh, when the library committee met, there were thirty books on the list.
Yes ma'am.
And I went back through the minutes to see what, uh, what their, their ultimate decision was on some of them. Um, I've got some suggestions for cl- clarity and transparency on the website on that, but I'll, I'll get with you later on that.
Okay.
But, um, there are a number of books here that are listed as no copies, um, in Destiny locations. A number of those were approved, uh, they were recommended, okay? That committee was not approving anything, they were recommending, um, for example, um, well, I'm not even gonna go into the books, but they recommended it could be in high school libraries with cons- parental consent. But the, for whatever reason, someone has gone and removed them, which I'm assuming that's the principal, because it's their purview. My question is, for legal, do I'm Mr. Legal. Okay, when we have a book on a shelf, okay, and a committee says it's okay to have it on the shelf with parental consent, and the principal overrides that basically, and takes it off the shelf, do we have a First Amendment issue?
We both don't, we don't believe there would be one. Um, first and foremost, the gatekeeper is the media specialist, it's themselves, the principal.
We're not talking spec- we're not talking medium, we're talking principal.
Okay, principals was, would be empowered to do it. Uh, the principal can make determinations whether the book is compliant with Florida statute, um, best standards, so there's a lot of discretion within it.
But the committee has gone, has come before him or her and said this doesn't, because, because they, they met and they studied the standards and they, uh,
My opinion, legal opinion, is that the principal by statute is the ultimate authority over that particular facility, subject, of course, to the, um, administration of the school, of the superintendent themselves. There's a lot of statutory powers that are enumerated within the principal, and I believe it would be pr- be proper within the discretion, as well as compliant with the statute.
Would there be any difference between a book already being on the shelf and being removed versus not being allowed to come in in the first place? First Amendment-wise?
The First Amendment really doesn't apply, cause it's, you're in a, you're in a school setting. So they, there's controls of what you're being allowed to see in general. But you can still go, the person can still go and access that information somewhere else, at home.
Well, I know that, yeah, we all know that.
Yeah, but that, you know, you don't, you don't have the right to carry an arm, but, you know, Second Amendment right in a school. I mean, there's, there's controls within that environment.
Okay, I, I just thought I read somewhere about, um, that, that there was a case that determined that students have First Amendment rights.
I'm gonna give clarification, if I may, Mr. Chair. There is First Amendment rights within school, um, it came under the Kinkar case. Um, however, the, what Mr. Die was explaining is that First Amendment rights are not necessarily global, they are with restriction, and I would agree.
The, um, okay, that's, um, that's all I have on that, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I still have some procedural questions, and then we'll get to the comments towards the end of the presentation. Dr. Rosa, first, I'd like to tell you that in my interactions with you professionally, I've had nothing but good interactions with you, and I find you to be intelligent and professional, and in my mind, your reputation has not in any way been degraded by what happened, with the realization that maybe what happened last Tuesday amongst all of us could've been handled a little bit better, but we'll talk about that a little later. But as far as, back to the procedure here, is it an all or nothing, either the book's in or out, or is, is there a parental? I know there's a thirty-day parental consent I saw, but ultimately, it's either in or out, or is there a third option that with parental consent? What, what have we decided to do?
So, uh, the way we started in the fall, there was a parent consent option, and you'll see noted on that, uh, you know, uh, six through eight library with parent consent, or nine through twelve with parent consent. Uh, and so that's the recommendation from the committee. Um, you know, unless the board opts to change that, uh, the committee felt, uh, you know, that it would be, um, best that we, we know there may be, uh, some mature subject matter, uh, which is why you would want the parent, uh, to, uh, consent, whether they would let their student, their child, read it. Um, but it did have merit, and it didn't, um, it didn't meet the definition as stated in statute as harmful to minors.
Okay, so there will be a third option, the principals will have a, the media specialist, that goes to my second, well, first of all, it's clear that, so there will be a third option, though, they keep, remove, or with parental consent?
That would certainly be, uh, up to the board, because the board, uh, approves the procedure. So, um, our recommendation would be, yes, that parent consent, uh, be allowed to remain, uh, but certainly it would be, um, sorry, uh, a board, uh, decision ultimately, as you approve the procedure.
All right, so I'm still a little co- confused about who has the ultimate authority here, whether it's the media specialist or the principal. Is the media specialist just gonna ma- make a recommendation to the principal, or can the media specialist say, because they're the one with all the training, say, no?
Yep, so my understanding is the, uh, principal has the ultimate responsibility of maintaining materials on their, on their campus. Uh, unless, of course, the board says no to something, then they follow the board, or the, you know, the superintendent. Um, the, the media specialist would give that recommendation, and, and hopefully the principal would, would heed that, cause they are the trained experts. But it, it ultimately is the principal's decision.
So, so the media specialist is making a highly recommended recommendation, for lack of, if we could use it in that way, but the principal, if for whatever reason, the principal decided, no, I think it's okay, the principal can make that decision, that person is the one with the ultimate authority. It's a little confusing to me.
Right, um, and so they ultimately are responsible for what's in there, if they went against the advice and chose to have something, which I don't believe would happen, but let's sa- say hypothetically that occurred, uh, then they would be responsible for any ramifications of having it, uh, you know, uh.
I wanna know where the buck stops, so to speak.
I think that the intent of the statute was truly twofold, the media specialist is the gatekeeper. They, I would say to you, nothing really should be getting in without the media specialist, who is certified, who's trained, who's following DUE procedure. They, they give, they, they could push the book through, but I think ultimately, the principal, once the book is pushed through, would in fact have the discretion itself. But ultimately, you gotta, it's, it's almost like contingent, media specialist, step one, step two, principal review, also parental objection as well, with potential committee in the thirty days, um, with consent of that nature. And I also agree for the comments that have been made, that media specialists would not be able to approve books that would be in violation of the statute itself, such as anything that would, um, be in a viol- violation of pornography. So there's a certain level of what can be approved, which I know, I know it's, that's the, that's what's been stated but unstated.
Okay. And then, did you, you said there, there is or will be a statewide list of these books, or what's your, have you already words on that?
We don't know that for sure, uh, we have been told that that could be a possibility, that the state, um, you know, eventually receives feedback from all districts and shares that for transparency, but I, I don't know any of that information with absolute certainty.
What would be interesting there is, I'm actually would not be a fan of that, just because what someone in Jacksonville County thinks, or, you know, another Broward County or something, I mean, we have our own, I remember part of that stand- standard that we looked at the other day, you know, local, generally accepted values within, within the community, and I wouldn't want people necessarily in other counties around the state of Florida necessarily making those decisions for us. And then the last thing, as far as just the procedure goes, is I, I'd just like to reemphasize Mr. Die's point, I mean, I'm not a lawyer myself, but we're talking about public libraries here, where the target audience is minors. And so, when we're talking about the First Amendment, I, I think there's a distinction to be made there between a public library, that's open to the public in general, and a library that's specifically oriented with materials towards minors, and there might be some further restrictions on the First Amendment there, that you wouldn't find out in the public in general. And so then, I have some other comments to make, but that'll be at the end, that's all I have to say about the procedure itself.
I'm gonna say that we're five, six minutes till twelve-thirty, we have F- FSBA here to present at twelve-thirty. I wanna make sure that we're not only one, respectful of their time, but I believe we're paying them by their time. So, so, um, so I wanna make sure that, that, and I know we've already cut into lunch, we've got rid of lunch. So, i- if we roll right now to twelve-thirty, which, um, I would like to, and we can do a working lunch, we can take a ten-minute break, grab something, come back. But I'd like to, to have FSBA have their, their time that they were here to give to them, so, five-minute warning.
Can I make one comment?
Yeah, 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 five-minute warning.
Closing comment, and to everybody that's involved, that, since this has been coming down the pike, it's not my intent to step on anybody's rights, that is not my intent at all. There's differences in legal opinions, there's differences in, um, literacy opinions, and that's what I was trying to point out, that the opinion of one media center specialist may be different than another one. And all of the books that are even in question are available at public libraries. We are protecting innocence, the innocence is what I stand for, the innocence of our children. And I don't want to cloud their academics with things that they shouldn't be reading. To me, it's writing, math, and, and, uh, spelling, and all of those fundamental cores of education. So, I'm not about a parent taking a book out of a library, public, public library, and letting that, their student or their child read that, that's their, that's their right. What I, what I stand for is, if that book is there, and this parent says it's okay, but they're sharing it with their little girlfriend, or their little boyfriend, or whatever, that's where it gets a little murky with me. So, that's all I had to say, I just wanna clear, I am totally a First Amendment person.
Yes.
So, okay.
I have two questions. One, this procedure's gonna come before us on the fourteenth?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because I have some people asking, I wanna make sure that I inform them properly. And number two, um, it's really more of a logistics questions, question of, right now, we're having wonderful volunteers go through and, and, and check in, oh, these aren't in Desti- uh, these are in Destiny, these aren't in Destiny. The ones that aren't in Destiny are being set aside to then go into some other list and get approved eventually, maybe, hopefully, will cross our fingers, okay? What, when will a teacher be notified that, hey, I have a book about penguins that is not in Destiny, and it's now sitting aside? What is the process for the teacher to then be notified, yes, that book is approved? Does everything have to get scanned all over again, or does the teacher get notified, because I feel like that could be very time-intensive multiple times?
It, it's certainly, uh, time-intensive, but, um, and so working with the media specialist and, and honoring their time, and, and, and they don't, I said this on, on Tuesday, um, uh, you know, they're teaching classes and everything else, so, uh, I don't know how quickly we're going to get through. Um, but we will get through, we will do it. And then, uh, the teacher will receive the material and say, this is, this is now listed on the, on the- on the district list, or whatever. If it's their personal material, we won't put it in Destiny, but we can still list it in a searchable format, so they can, uh, have it on their shelf in their classroom.
Okay, so they will be notified, they don't have to rescan everything?
They don't have to, no, we don't expect them to do that.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
And last thing.
Okay, I'm watching the clock. So I just wanna go to the whole issue of what happened back on Tuesday. Ms. Means, did you get my email, ask you to, that had a document to put up?
Yes, for real.
Can you pop it up real quick, if you would? So I just wanted to show everyone what the guidance was that, that went out on, on Tuesday, or whenever that went out. And the reason I'm doing this is because public, it's not, this is beyond the books right now, it's about the public trust, basically. And so we, and I'll take, I'm up here, so I, at least this is my opinion for the board, did not handle this in the best way that we possibly could, because what happened at that meeting was, statements were, were made that we, the, the system, so to speak, did not tell the teachers to cover up their books, or to remove them, and yet clearly, that was the verbal guidance that, that was given. And so, you know, when the public trust comes up, when we say something like that, and then it's brought to light that, well, that's actually not what happened, and I'm not implying any bad intentions by anybody, I will make the point that Ms. Saunders, within 24 hours, did bring to my attention the fact that, well, actually, we did bring, we did put out some written guidance, and maybe you weren't aware of it at the time, because the two of you hadn't communicated behind the scenes, or whatever. So I'm just making the point that there was some public trust that was, we could've done a better job maintaining the public trust there. Uh, but, and it doesn't, it doesn't reflect poorly on you personally, or anybody, it's that we could've done better in general.
Well, actually, Mr. Tatum, I'm the one that made that statement, and I think probably, and I hope we clarified it some, part of it is, we, and this was all done very quickly, we put, should've put a caveat. A, a teacher library really are intended to be materials that are purchased by the district. Those do not have to be covered. They've already been vetted, they're accessible, they do not have to be removed.
Right.
The materials in question are those that are personal items, that were bought by a teacher on shelves in their classroom, and if they have not been vetted per the statute, they cannot be accessible until so. So, in part, I, I think it was terminology, we didn't specify it correctly, and I am the person that made that statement, so I do apologize if it was conveyed incorrectly.
Okay, great. And, and just as a lesson to be learned, right? And then it also, like, to, to some degree, it's the first time that I've ever heard somebody come up and public comment and say, I apologize for what I said previously, I was wrong. Like, I don't hear that too often. And just as a lesson for all of us, and that, that's kinda what I'm trying to do on our part, like, we didn't handle this as well as we could, and we were wrong, and we put out information that was not in line with the actions that we took. So as a general idea, coming from a leadership education background, that first question is, what, what am I doing to make the situation more difficult, and how could I do better? If we all keep that in mind, a lot of times, we'll have a lot better interpersonal relationships. And even looking at this kinda situation, looking back at it, we call this a hot wash in the military, maybe we use that in civilian world, too, of, what was, what's the hot wash here? How did we handle this? Was there good enough communication between the superintendent and the, and the rest of the staff to know exactly what was going on? The last thing, Dr. Rosen, if you're standing up here, and you know that something that's being said, that we're saying, that I'm saying, is not factually true, I'd like you to raise your hand and say, Mr. Tatum, I know that what you're saying is not factually true because of a document, or whatever, so, at least from my perspective, please don't hesitate to clarify something. If it's a judgment call, I understand you not wanting to contradict your superintendent in public, but if it's something that's gen, obviously not factually true, as opposed to a little judgment call, at least from my perspective, please raise your hand and be called on. That might've avoided the whole issue in the first place, and I think I went a minute or two over.
Well, I certainly appreciate the feedback, um, and, and, you know, we'll make sure that when we share memos that are, um, share with the superintendent, Bat Barber, we make sure we're inclusive of, of everyone, so everyone's on the same page. It's certainly an opportunity for improvement.
If I could've got, if we could've gotten that, too, like, if you send out a big policy change like this, why not just put the school board members on it, too? And that way, we can see it, and...
Right, so, so we, we send it to Mrs. Saunders, and then, you know, she...
Okay. Her decision, whether...
Her decision to, to share, and I'll continue to do that.
Great, thank you.
But I, I'm, I'm all for correcting Mr. Tatum if he's wrong, okay?
Hey, feedback is great in any way that you get it.
I agree, we all can do better, thank you.
Ten minutes, ten minutes. Um, and then we're to you, Dr. Vogel. We're to y'all, ten minutes.
No one's gonna be insulted if we sit up here.
No.
We're gonna pull up.
Yeah, you don't worry.
Workshop, back into order here. And it is going to be a lunch working workshop. So, so the board members will have some food and that's okay. Want to go ahead and bring up Dr. Vogel, Mr. Record. Come on up and present to us what you guys got for our search, our superintendent search.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. And good evening or good afternoon, board members. We did provide y'all with a timeline, a first draft timeline for your review. And hopefully today, if we can finalize this, we can go ahead and start filling in some dates for our four community forums that will, that will be conducted prior to the end of February, along with our online survey. So, just a quick review of the timeline and hopefully you've had some time to look at it. Basically, February will, three, three weeks of February will be basically our time to get our online survey up and running and also to hold your four community forums. It is my understanding that one of those community forums will work to have it a virtual option as well. So, if any members of the public can attend one of the four face-to-face community forums, they'll have an opportunity to attend one of them virtually. So, that's just a quick comment there. Your three staff groups, your administrative group, your instructional pair pro together, and then your support professionals, that would be face-to-face focus groups with that group, those groups to get their input. After all the input is gathered by the survey and the forums, we'll compile those results, the top items, send it to you as a board. And then we will meet on March the 3rd to basically have you set your qualifications, the minimum and preferred, if you would like to go in that order or that route. Also, the qualities and characteristics that you can pull from some of the input. And we'll basically be ready to advertise after that meeting, once you set the items that are listed there. The preferred qualifications, we will talk about a salary at that point in time, the length of contract you'd like to offer, those issues that we need to have resolved before we post the ad. So, we meet, get that accomplished on March 3rd. March 10th would begin our advertisement period. It would run through April the 10th. After all the applications are in and you've had some time to review those, we will meet on April the 14th for you to identify the semifinalists. I do know the board did want to have semifinalists. So, once you identify a group of semifinalists, we'll have them respond to five questions, two or three video, two or three written. And we can finalize that as we work through the workshop on April the 14th. So, after those responses are in, those responses will come back to Ms. Messina on April the 24th. And at that point, she'll provide those video responses and the written responses to you as board members. We'll also post those responses on your search portal, again, to keep the public informed as we move through the search process. After a period of time that you've had those responses, we then would meet on April the 28th for you to select the finalists that you want to bring in for onsite interviews. We've talked about, you know, that number could be three, four, five, whatever the board selects. And the two dates that we have set aside for onsite interviews will be May the 11th and 12th. May the 11th would be the day where the board sits as one body and interviews each of the finalists. We would recommend that the board consider that evening of May the 11th to maybe have a community reception, a community meet and greet. So, your community can come and meet those finalists in an appropriate setting, whether it be something like a civic center or, you know, whatever's appropriate for Manatee to have such a reception. The, the public really seems to enjoy meeting those candidates on, on that evening. Then the next day, May 12th, that would be the day that you would have your personal one-on-one interview with each of the finalists. During their community meet and greet, we'll have an opportunity to have a QR code available. So, the members of the public, as they leave, they can access that QR code, provide some feedback on each of the finalists. Maybe they see strengths in this particular candidate. Maybe they have questions about this candidate, some, some issues. So, that feedback from that community reception, we'll provide to the board early the next morning, that before you go into your one-on-one interviews, because there may be something in that public input that you might want to ask the candidate about as you interview one-on-one. After those two days are concluded, then May 16th, and I did have to put in this one special board meeting, and hopefully the board can set this up for one special meeting just to select your next superintendent. So, that is a quick overview of the timeline. If there's any questions, sir?
Just a couple of things for me and then open up everybody else. As the applications are coming in, just to be clear, we're going to be able to have access to those coming in as they come, like when the first one comes in, or, you know, maybe not the first one, but here's a 10, batch of 10 of them, you're going to kick them and say, here you go. The only reason I ask that is just because from the 10th to the 14th, four days, once the advertisement closed, then for us to pick, bring a finalist, I mean, we'll probably all have finalists that we come up together with. I just want to make sure that's only four days if we look through 30 of them.
Right.
So, as long as we have chances to, as we go.
Yes. I can do it either way. Typically, every Friday of the advertisement period, I send them, I will send them to Amanda and ask her to forward them to you. And then the next day, once the board has received them, we would post them to the website. I certainly can do it as they come in. If I get a complete application the third day, I can send it to Amanda, she can get it to you within, you know, a couple of days once I receive it.
I, I don't particularly care if it's every day. I'm just, once a week is, is fine with me. I just wanted them before only having four days to look through a chunk, you know what I mean?
Right. And I will say this, the last week, the last three days, the last two days are when you're going to get a lot of your applications.
Okay.
So, what I would maybe suggest is for the first two or three weeks of the advertisement period, I'll send the complete applications to Amanda every Friday. And then y'all can have them by, by that, you know, Monday. In the last week, I'll just do them as they come in. Because you'll, you'll get quite a few, the majority of your applications will come that last week.
Other than, I mean, the, to me, this, this timeline looks really good. The, one question I have, the onsite, or the, when they come onsite and we do like a reception, I'm sure you've done that obviously before. So, is it like each one gets their own corner of the room and people walk around? Do they get a chance to come up in, in front of everybody and say, hey, here's, here, introduce themselves, etc.? Like what, what's the process that looks like?
What we would do, typically do, say we have four finalists. We would ask those, each finalist to come to the podium and give a five to eight minute intro of him or herself, while the other three finalists are off in a room.
Gotcha.
We just kind of switch them around, so each finalist would have a chance to kind of speak to the public for five to eight minutes. After that, then you're exactly right, we just, we set up a little high-top table in, say, four corners. The candidates go there and the, and the, the public just mingles and talks with each of the candidates. FSBA will be there to kind of make sure we keep the, the lines kind of moving and a particular community member may not, you know, take a, a too large amount of time with one candidate. So, we kind of keep it flowing. And it really works well, people just seem to gravitate. A fourth of the crowd will go to, you know, each corner and it moves, it moves well.
That's all I have.
Yes, ma'am.
You want to start, Ms. Messenger, do you have anything?
Really, I, I think I only had one thing. I remember that we had talked about having a website. Is that set up yet? And if it's not, will this timeline get put on the website?
Yes, ma'am. I, I do know they're planning to kind of have your superintendent search portal. And once you approve this timeline and I kind of get some final information through Amanda for your forums at the schools, then I'll plug in those dates and times. So, your timeline would be one of the first things that go up, along with your online survey.
So, this is probably more of a district question than a question for you, is where will it be on the website? I would like for it to be right on the front page if we can. And I know, I, I mean, I know you guys are capable of doing that, but I think that would be, like, it should just be there the whole time. Because like, they kind of, like, some of them kind of move as new things come, but it shouldn't.
Right. Typically, districts have one icon, you know, one, one box. It's superintendent search. They may do something clever with like a magnifying glass or whatever, but you click on there and then you would have buttons to look at your timeline, a button for the survey, a button for applications, once they start coming in. So, as it's, it's, it's kind of like that, the old Polaroid pictures where you took the picture, you had to wait a bit before it came into focus. This is always kind of moving along, so you're always adding to it and the whole search process just gets, you know, more additional information as every week goes by.
Okay. Yeah, because we have a new website and so I just, I don't know where it'll go, but I just want to make sure it's like, easy to find. But otherwise, this, the intention will be that this, maybe not to this level of, of depth, but there will be this type of information.
Right. We'll, we'll actually post this.
This exact thing. Okay, great.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, again, it's transparency.
It is.
And when we get to like forum results, we'll post that on there. So, there's always little additions or subparts that go under some of your major topics.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Brad, I was just going to go around.
All right, okay. Go ahead.
I wanted to say, I would ask that we have include in that portal, the videos of our discussions. So that the public can, I mean, you know, we've had, really did, we've only had two. One was the, you know, the, the interviews with, which I think should be on there so that they know how we, how and why and who we picked to be our search and, you know, so we can abbreviate the, the meetings. I'm, I'm pretty sure.
You mean the group meeting, like the five of us meeting with the person?
No, no, I'm talking about our meetings, like, like right now.
Oh, like right now?
Right now.
Oh, you mean just attach this file to in the portal? Oh, I got you, yeah.
Yeah, so that anything having to do with the superintendent.
So, then I have to go look at the board meetings, workshop, final date. I got you.
Yeah.
That's easy.
I was told it, it'll be put in two places. It'll be on the front page as well as in the superintendent section, just in case, you know, people may think that's where it's listed at. But we can, we can put links for every, every meeting if you choose.
I like that.
And Ms. Forman, there are quite a few districts that do have a little, again, once you click on the big page, you'll get a, the opportunity to look at board workshops and meetings related to the search and they'll put those there.
I kind of, I kind of use, I, I followed the Orange County and, and I think they did that and I thought that was really good. I mean, you could get anything off of that page.
And if.
Ms. Brad, go ahead.
If applicant put their interest in, in the beginning of this process, and so that portal would be updated as, as we went along. If they decided not to come here, that would be pulled down immediately. Would we then get an email saying this particular person decided not to go forward?
Yes, ma'am. If you, the application site would have applicant number one, you know, Mr. John Smith, then applicant number two, Ms. Mary Smith. If you click on the applicant number one, you go to their resume and their application packet. If, let's say, Mr. Smith decided to withdraw from consideration, while we don't remove his name, we put just applicant number one has withdrawn.
Okay. That was my, because it's like, okay, applicant one, two, three, four, five. If applicant one fell off, then number two would shift up and it's like, okay.
We just say.
Good.
And of course, if that happens, we notify the board immediately.
Okay. I, I'm good with this timeline. I think it's very precise. Because I looked at my personal calendar, looked at this calendar, looked at school district calendar, and it's like, okay, we have to match all of these things together. Although I know on the weekend of the 31st, a workshop, I think Ms. Forman will be out of town for that one. She can chime in.
Yeah, I'll, I'll come, you know, it's.
Yeah, that was the only thing.
I think you have to tamper pretty quickly. I'm not going to, I'm, I'm going to.
Yeah, that's what I, that was the only thing I, I did notice that. I'm like, okay, well, that's a FSBA conference week.
Yes.
So, yeah, okay.
I think June 7th through 9th is FSBA conference, I believe, so I'll certainly avoid that. We won't, we won't.
Yeah, that was the only thing. I'm like, okay, to make sure we don't overlap.
Right. And I believe all the, that we're done with this, part of your graduations as well.
Right.
So, that's, that's a good thing.
All right, Mr. Tatum?
Maybe you said it, I might have missed, excuse me if you did. So, when the, the applications come in, they'll be available for the public to see quickly as soon as we see them or how will that be?
Typically, when I receive the complete application, then I would send it to Amanda for submission of, sent, sent, to send out to the board members. And typically, once she sends it out, we kind of update or alert IT to post it to the website. We just like the board to have them first and then within the day or two, they'll be on the website.
So, it's a very short delay between.
Yes.
When we get them and when the rest of the public gets to see them.
Exactly.
Okay.
Typically, the, the day after you get them is when we post them to the website.
Good. Well, this timeline looks very professionally done and seems to incorporate, you've been through this program before, I haven't flown this plane before, so to speak.
Yes.
So, I'm going to.
Thank you.
Trust you, that's why we hired you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
All right.
Good, sir.
Timeline is good.
Good. And I'll include our forum dates and so forth and that'll kind of complete it. We'll take draft off of it and I'll get it to Amanda, we can get it posted on the website as soon as that's up. If I could please now.
Question for.
I'm sorry.
One more comment. You said that one of the, the community forums will be available for live stream. Could we make it the last one so that the public has opportunity, you know, we can promote it for as long as we can?
I don't think it's going to matter what school, I mean, you got, we got to check with the schools and things like that. I think when we talked, we talked about parish being the Zoom anyway, because it's the newest technology-wise, I think, but that's for.
Yeah, but, you know.
Smarter people than me to figure it out.
Yeah, rather than the first one, do it on the last one.
Okay, we'll do.
I agree. Good point, Mary.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if we now can move to the survey, and I believe that Amanda has given y'all the, the hard copy of, of this document. I will tell you quickly what I did. In the first section on the personal leadership qualities, I've highlighted in yellow the items that had three or more board members that had selected those items. The three items in blue, which were needed to make, to give us a total of 10, based on some just kind of research that Dr. Vogel and I have done on your website, through your strategic plan, just, you know, meeting and talking with you as a board, we're, we've just put out for your consideration, the additional three in blue to round that first section off to 10. And certainly, there's, other than just kind of our interactions with the Manatee Board and what we know of Manatee, we added those three blue. Certainly, you can add others if you like, but we're just, we're trying to get 10 in each, each section.
I like the way you tally it everything up and.
Yes, sir. On the, on the far right, you see all of your totals and part of that, you see the input from each board member.
Let's just do, let's take group by group.
Okay.
If that'd be okay.
Yes, sir.
So, just that personal leadership qualities. I mean, me looking at it right now, you know, obviously, I think if three or more board members, we got to go with that question. And the two that you all, the three that you all highlighted, I'm good with. So, I, I, we just, we can just go around and say is, are we good with this? And if not, do you have a suggestion on what you want to add or not? So, I'm okay with it. Let's start with you, Mr. Tatum on this side.
I'm fine with it. If we want to add the ones in blue, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Perfect. Or Ms. Forman?
Yeah, the, the one that concerned, number 10, leads with a vision yet honors the past. We've got some really good things going on here, some good programs. The, I would hate for a new person to come in and get rid of Woz, get rid of Guy Harvey, you know, without, certainly a very thoughtful, thoughtful and, don't blow things up as soon as you get here. And, and that's happened in, in some counties, where you get a new superintendent. So, I like, you know.
I, I do like that question. I do like your thought there too.
Mm-hmm.
I think that that's something that we can though vet with them. Like, that's going to be one of my, I mean, I'd probably say, one of my questions about, you know, hopefully they've done some research on the, on the district. And that would be one of my questions, is like, what are your thoughts on the programs we have going and what are your, you know, and making changes, you know, like you say, blowing up something when you get in? I don't know if it needs.
Well, the county, or people filling out the survey, they may want it to blow up, you know? I mean, it depends on.
True, true.
You know, if we're asking them, you know, do you like the past?
So, as we're talking about this, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine.
But as we're talking about this, I know you say you'd like to have 10. I mean, are we saying like add one, get rid of one, or is it okay to have 11?
It's a, I was fixing to say, we can include that and make it 11. Because there is one section where there are 12 items that three or more board members identified. So, my recommendation was going to be leave the 12. So, we can certainly just add this one and make it 11.
I would 100% be okay with that.
We're fine with that.
I do agree with you, but I don't, I don't know which one we get rid of in the case. So, I, if you're all are okay with having 11, I'm okay with having 11. I mean.
Okay.
What is one more question?
Can I just comment on that?
Yeah.
I don't interpret that to mean what you're saying. I think that's why I didn't pick that. I don't interpret honoring the past as accepting what we have right now, because that's what we have right now. That's not the past. To me, what I interpret that to mean is things that might have been done much further than now. Like, this is what's happening now, that's not past, that's current. So, I didn't interpret that question to mean the way, what you're interpreting it. So, I kind of even wonder if we. So I kind of even wonder if we asked that, like, what kind of response are you even gonna get? Because it may mean what I'm thinking or it may mean what somebody responds. It may mean what I'm thinking or it may mean what you're thinking, because I didn't interpret that to mean what you're saying. I agree with what you want to do. I think that's just reasonable. You know what I mean? We, we're on a good track. We've been moving positive.
So that it.
Yes, let, Dr. Vogel and I reword it to basically say, you know, leads with a vision, but.
Don't blow things up.
The current programs that are, yes, we, we will re.
I just, I, I mean, like, I, I, I support what you're saying, is what I'm trying to say, like what you're saying. I just didn't think that's what that was saying.
I'd like to.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
And to me, a lot of that's covered under creative and successful innovator.
Well, it's not their creation.
That doesn't, that doesn't say that they're being the creator. It says that they are creative and successful innovator. It doesn't mean that that has to be theirs. That just means that they are that kind of person. And we, we did say we want that.
Humor me and let's.
What?
Could you humor me and put this?
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying, I didn't interpret it that way, that's all.
This is something too, that we're asking the public to say, this is what you feel like, not necessarily what this person would do.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
But I do understand what you're saying, for sure. Uh, Ms. Frank?
I didn't read that into that either. If you want to reword it to successful programs.
Yeah.
I would say that because there may be a program that maybe that's going on right now that is not as successful as another, but we gotta find some money somewhere and we might have to layer in what one person might deem successful to another opinion, just like in the last block we had about difference of opinions. So I like that word, successful, in there.
We will reword and make.
There, yeah.
We would have 11 in the first category.
Okay.
Moving to the next one, instructional excellence in leadership. You'll see there that there were 12 items in the yellow highlight, which means at least three of board, three or more board members selected those 12. So with your agreement, we'll just leave those 12 and let them remain on the survey. And 12 would be okay. Okay, then moving to the business, finance and operations. There were eight that were in yellow with three or more board members. And then again, we have, we'll recommend or for your consideration, item number three in blue and item number 10 to add those two to make that section 10.
We're in the business finance.
I'm okay, I'm okay with the two that you all have highlighted blue. We'll start with Ms. Messenger. What, what are your opinion on the two blue ones?
You know, the reason why I didn't pick number 10 is because I feel like that's a given. Like, our budget is a zero-based budget and that's a given that if you're gonna be walking in here, you're gonna be doing that. So I didn't, that's why I didn't even pick that one. But to me, number 13 is very important. I want someone that knows how to communicate with the community about our one mil, because we're gonna be going back out for it in 2024. And I, I think that's important. So personally, I know that that one only has two. I think it's me and Mr. Cho. But I think that that one is very important. I know that was asked more than one time, so I guess I need to go back because it was asked in more than one section. Is it, is it, is it in another section?
It's on number 16, um, community.
Okay, then. Then ignore what I just said. I'm, I'm, I, then we don't need to put it in two places, that's so silly.
Ms. Frank?
I think this is a great document because you actually can see where we all agree, to be honest. Number three, I just wish it would have had the na, the titles on the other side, so we'll have to keep referring over. Okay, let's see, I'll stand out, all right. Number three in business finance, is that where we're at? We're in section three, correct?
Business Finance Operations.
Right, business finance, and there was only two people that actually had marked that, okay. And then the other bullet was, okay, zero-based budget. All right, I'm good with what we have here. I was just trying to get the title matched with the, yes, matched up with the other side, so I'll just do that.
The reason I didn't select number 10, because heaven knows I'm all about budget and zero base. It's, to me, some of these questions were microman, were, were micromanaging. The superintendent is responsible for oversight, but they're not success, they're not charged with developing a zero-based budget. And frankly, I'm having that, that same consideration on number three. Is that they're responsible for safety and security, but they are not responsible for oversight. I mean, that's a method. So I'm wondering if we should get rid of in number three, including oversight of district police force.
What about if you did, if you reworded, like, number 10, let's say, has participated in.
Directed.
Or directed, or, oh, you know, something where it's not, they weren't an actual, the CFO, you know what I mean? But they were a part of it. I think, I think that would be good. And, and then I, then the third one, almost the same thing, like.
Well, they're responsible, so.
Yeah.
So it's, I, I think you would just delete including oversight of the district police force. Because.
Okay.
She doesn't, she doesn't.
She doesn't, she's not oversight, but yeah, because we have Paul.
Yeah.
Not every district has, has Paul, has a Paul. I would, I would be fine.
Okay, so we'll, I will.
Any objections to removing those, or adding those?
And can you want to say has experience with a zero-based budget?
Yeah.
Develop, I would, yeah, I would just say has experience in the development process or something like that, that they've been a part of it, but they're not the one doing it. Isn't that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Has experienced and, I don't think you need to have the word develop in there.
That's true too.
I mean, because zero-based bu, budgeting is actually not, you're not developing that. It's just already in place. It's experiencing dealing with that, so.
Has experience of zero-based budgeting?
Yes.
To meet district goals, yeah.
Okay, good, we'll, we'll adjust those two and that'll give us that total. And then our last area, the board, staff and community relations, I'm sorry, next to the last, we had. Actually, I added one too many blues. There's, there's 11 in that section if you count the two blues, so we can eliminate one of the two blues in the section.
I like both those blues.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
We'll leave 11 then?
Yeah, leave them.
We'll leave 11.
I would, I, me personally, I mean.
So 11 will be okay, good, thank you. And then our last item, performance accountability. We have 10 there and we only had one, two, three, four, six, that four, three or more board members wanted, so.
They're all over the place on that one.
Where are we at? Oh, I see, yeah.
Performance accountability. Funny. I, I'm okay with the blues to be added there.
Well, again, number four is, that's micromanaging, don't you think?
Well, I don't think it's actually saying they did the staff evaluation, they just implemented the program for the staff evaluation.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I got, I do.
I do agree with you if it said they actually did it.
That seemed to be a priority of the board to be heard.
Right.
Oh, absolutely.
Is there any, any objections to the blues on that last one? Or, or adding or subtracting one, or?
Give me, I, I tore mine apart so I could see the titles. Um, where are you at then?
The last one, performance accountability. Um, I'm, I'm good with the blues.
Oh, I see, yeah, we went on to the next one, I see, yeah, all right.
I, I'll say, I want to say thank you. This is, this is really, really good. I mean, this is really helpful to see all of our numbers like this, like together. It's pretty interesting.
Yeah.
Data analysis. Yeah, go ahead.
So I noticed that a number of the questions appear very similar in different categories. Is that something that you're doing as a survey technique to try and get consistent answers from people or, or not?
We, I, I, I really think it's, districts are at times very different, but again, there are, districts are very similar. And one or two words for some districts may, may make a big difference. So we just again put, and I know some are a little repetitious, but we do try to put them in, again, to try to maybe get the best statement that would fit your district.
Okay, that's good. I just noticed sometimes in psychological surveys, if you read the literature, it talks about, you know, they'll ask you, do you like your mom? And they want to verify that that's really what, how you feel and they'll say, do you think your mom was a nice person? You know, and they correlate the answers between the two, so I thought maybe that's what you were trying to do here. On the other hand, it can be irritating to people when they're taking a survey if they get the same question twice, like, I just answered that. But that's all, just a comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Get moving forward, thank you again.
Exciting, exciting to move the next step and keep going.
Thank you for compiling this. It's very interesting. I, I feel like through this process, like, because we have new people that I don't know very well, like, I will learn them through this process just as much as we learn a new superintendent.
Yeah, for sure.
So, thank you.
Can I say something?
Great, yes, you can.
I did this at home, okay? And for whatever reason, it didn't come through in my email. So I was sitting in the car trying to remember what I had done. So I, I, I brought.
That's why yours look funny.
Some of mine are, yeah, it's.
No, I'm kidding.
No, the, the, the answers I gave to Amanda are somewhat different from what I originally did. Think differently in the car, I guess.
Well, we will plan on having this up live Monday.
Okay.
You'll have time to revise, you send it. Scott just said the site's ready, so he'll have the tabs, so it'll, Monday.
We'll, I'll finalize the survey this weekend, get it to Ms. Messina, she'll put it in the, the survey format. Then she provides your IT department with a, she's gonna do the survey gizmo, gizmo concept. She'll provide them with a QR code and then some coding for them to put that code on their system. But all the results will really goes back to Ms. Messina. And then she compiles that at the end. And she can keep a running total of, say by next Wednesday, we'll know we've already had 200 inputs, you know, people complete. But she'll kind of work with your IT folks to do that.
And we'll obviously, I'm sure, make a link for Facebook and all that kind of stuff that can, we can put out there and share and.
And the calendar, they'll have, you know, firmed up and we'll have that posted Monday.
Right, right.
Great, thank you.
We, we'd spoken before about your kind of key communicator group. And I didn't know if y'all were gonna kind of identify that group to do something from your end here or.
I.
I would assume there's a DL list, but, I mean, the survey has, as you recall at the bottom, it has a avenue for the, for people to check, I'm a parent, I'm a past employee, I'm a current employee, I'm a business leader. So that might give you that information as well.
I, I think that we can send it to them. I think that, I think that we, as a board, I know I personally, like, I would like to have the access to send this specifically to people that I can, if you haven't done it yet or not, so we can get their, their feedback. I think that it's, it would be, we would probably want to send it to all of our partners and directly to them so they don't have to go hunt for it. And those are, those are the ones you're talking about. I mean, the ones who are, who are actively participating in, in all of our stuff, the EDC, the ELC, all those. I mean, we want to probably specifically send that to them and then they can disseminate to their people or whoever they want in there.
They'll post it on their sites as well too, for feedback. That's the great thing about having, they'll put it on their distribution list too if we ask to get, you know, make sure their communities know.
Does that answer that question?
Yeah, that does. We'll have to work, we'll work the logistics out on that. That might be set out to you separately, that, because you have distribution lists. And you have, and I think board members are gonna look at all of those names on that list, so you knew who was on that list.
Our communications department has those.
Right.
The people we send all the.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I think you wanted to see that and scored separately.
Oh, correct, yeah, the, the ones that we individually send.
Right.
That is correct. I think we did talk about that, that we want our, like, those key people to be separate than just the general public, yes.
One quick question on the, and again, this was probably said somewhere along the line, so excuse me for asking it again, or having you repeat information, but the general public will have access to this survey?
Yes.
Or not, okay. And how do we prevent pe, people from the state of Washington or Fiji or, this is a risk we run and we assume people in Fiji don't care about the superintendent of Manatee County? Is that kind of what it is?
They're chilling the hammocks.
Okay, and then, but, but, you know, people do like to go around with robots and do these, you know, hey, we'll just mess up these people's processes. So is there a, a, something in there that keeps that from happening or?
You know, it, it's something that we really, to answer your question, I don't, I don't believe we do. I don't. I don't know though if we've really had any real concerns or issues with that in the past.
There is a little, what do they call, ICHAPCA or something like that, where you, before you, you know, before you submit this, before you submit this, yeah, before you submit this survey, click all the boxes with a bus in it or something. It takes five seconds. It's just a thought to make sure we don't get 10,000 random surveys.
I'll maybe talk with Andrew about that.
It's a, it's a thought.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Um, can I say one thing about that? In surveys in the past, they've also been able to, at, at least I remember Mr. Chapman saying this, that they've been able to look at like the IP addresses and see like if there's a ton coming from one IP address, they've been able to like address it in that manner as well. Because we've done surveys before that were community-wide ones and they looked at that.
I'm not that smart.
Me either.
Okay.
There's a way of doing that, but there's also a way where you're confidential, so you really don't know, you just know.
Yeah.
You know the person.
No.
Because some people are really concerned if they respond, even though if you might find out who they are too.
No, yeah, there's no way for us to know the person's name. It was just like that address, that IP address.
Yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, safe travels.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so we are moving and this last section, I'd like to be able to keep it to the, the three things we just, we talked about before. Remember, Ms. Forman, you had two things.
Yeah.
You want to talk about, I know you, you want to talk about procedure type thing with the board. All the other stuff, I'd like to be able to push back when Mr. Chapman is here. And I would ask the board if they could be so, we could be so gracious that we end this in 45 minutes.
Sorry.
That was a yes, all right, perfect.
All right. Um, I would ask that the first one, that everybody take a look at policy 0165.1.
It, that was in here, right? Yeah, I remember seeing it. It was D.
It was actually the first.
Yeah. Agendas.
Yeah. Pulled up for myself too. Okay, what I'm asking us to consider is, has to do with pulling items from the consent agenda. I think that the original intent of any board member can pull something from consent was, is not geared and, and without voter, without the board having to vote on it. But if we do it during the meeting, to me, that becomes a amended, amendment to the agenda and would, would require a vote. And I, that's the way I would like to see the policy specified that way. And I, and I think, okay, let me, what I suggest a change is to delete the second paragraph of D regarding the consent agenda. This would eliminate the ability of a single board member to remove items from the consent agenda. Instead, it would be an amendment to the agenda that the entire board must vote on if it comes up during the approval of the agenda. Of note, this would not impact the board member's request to move an item from consent prior to the Friday noon deadline. So if you want something pulled from consent, just do it before Friday and nobody's got to approve it. But if you want to do it the day of. But if you want to do it the day of, um, it needs to be an amendment.
And, and if, I'm trying to go back to, I'm jumping back to like the agenda on Tuesday. So. The approval of the agenda, agenda, and then, and that item number seven, what you're asking is, if I come to the, let's say I came Tuesday and wanted to pull a consent item.
Mm-hmm.
That I do it at that portion of the approval of the agenda?
Yeah.
And then it's now an agenda amendment and then we vote on altogether that agenda plus the pulled item as an amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Am I explaining that correctly?
Um, yeah.
Did I get that right?
We're all, we all have ability on the agenda on two things. One, we can pull something from consent. What I'm saying is that we do that before Friday noon.
Sure.
And then the other thing is we can come to any meeting with an, a proposed amendment to the agenda, okay? But the, but the board must vote on that to, to, to approve amending the agenda. So.
Even if we, because even, like you say, even if we had an agenda item that we woke up with on Tuesday and said, oh, I want to add this to the, to the item, we would have, we would.
We can do that.
We could do that with a vote.
Right.
So you're saying just put that, put the pulling in a, a, a consent item at that same level? Okay? And we could still pull the, you could still pull consent your normal ways before Friday at noon.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, or add an agenda item before Friday at noon.
Well, if it's after the agenda's been published, you have to get you.
Correct.
You, you.
I meant seven days before, yeah.
Okay, let me understand this, what you're saying. You're saying that to pull a consent item, you have to make a motion to amend the agenda to pull consent items, et cetera, as.
If you're doing it at the meeting.
Right.
Okay. If you do it.
Board briefing.
At the, at the board briefing and.
Or the Friday, right, I get that. But I, your point is saying if I went past the Friday of being able to pull a consent item. That I come on Tuesday, the agenda's already been published, all of the above, for me to pull something from the consent, it has to go to the full board to vote on?
Yes, it would be an amendment.
Amendment to the agenda.
Yep.
So it would be my saying, I want to amend the agenda to pull consent items four, five, and six from the agenda. And I would need a second and then we'd have to do a vote. That's the Roberts process. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that.
And if that goes no.
Because if that happened, I mean, if we're going to amend this, then I'm going to look real deep at those consent items a little farther. Because if I have to do, you know, go take every consent item, maybe I might've had that question over the weekend. But I'm going to have to do this on a.
Have to do it earlier, so, and then you don't need the board vote.
That's what I'm just, that's what I'm trying to depict here. If I didn't do that prior to Friday and I saw this Monday, wait a minute. I dug deeper inside this, like, item, then I would be a motion to amend the current agenda to remove item seven from the consent to new business. Would that be the per, correct way of saying that, I'm guess?
Yes, I, yes.
According to my Robert Stur's experience, it would be, I would make a motion to amend the agenda to move consent item number five to new business. I'd need a second, then it would go to the entire board to vote.
Correct.
Okay.
And my question on that, too, is, uh.
Would that be for?
It would have to be every single consent item you'd want.
Right, that's the thing.
Like you.
That would be my second question.
It would be just seven. And, because you could then say, well, I, I agree that we should move seven, but not eight, but then, so you don't want to say no to the whole motion. So we'd literally have to make a motion for every single one.
I would ask defer to Mr. Die on that.
Yeah, what's your thoughts?
You would have to do everyone.
I mean, now we're talking about if there's five, one, two, four.
Yeah, I agree with you. That'd be the better way to do it. Individually.
Each individual one?
Yeah.
Each individual one. You would have to do each individual one as a, a motion to amend, pull that consent, a second, then a vote. A motion to amend, a second, and then a vote. For any, if there's more than, you know, one or two items, that could make for a long day.
Well, I.
Hopefully, we'll have enough clarity that we don't have to, you know.
And I think the, the, for me, when I think about this, is, um. The consent items are, are there as, those are pretty much every, not every day, of course, but every year type things that we do consistently on a consistent basis. And a consent item, and the reason why they were, I would assume, created is that you're not, and there'll be some agendas that have 50 consent items. And it's because we're purchasing books. Well, we've already talked about the purpose, you know, purchasing curriculum books and prior workshops and things like that. And we don't need to have another discussion on it, and that's why it's a consent item. So I, I don't, I don't think that, I just don't, I mean, I could see where this could get, if we're, if we have seven consent items want to be pulled and we're having to vote seven times on each one. I could definitely see, me personally, I can't see, I, the consent items, and I've said this before, you know, are, are stuff that, that has already been done. This is not new stuff that's happening, stuff that's been reoccurring and happening before. And I think the reason why we had the, the Friday at noon was because you had a chance to have the, the, your board briefing, have, you know, five, six, to eight days, whatever it is, to do the research on those items. Maybe you wanted to talk to transportation or talk to somebody about a little more in depth that maybe the superintendent really couldn't get in-depth to. And it allowed you that time period to do that before Friday at noon. I would be okay trying it, and if you feel like there's so many, maybe we just come back and readjust the policy again.
Yeah, but, yeah, we can always.
But I do agree with you. I do agree that pulling consent item is an amendment, that's an amendment to the agenda now. So it should be treated like every other amendment to an agenda.
Right.
Ms. Messenger, did you have, I'm sorry, Ms. Brady.
But, well, I'm just getting to the point that consent items, you're saying, are everyday expenditures or every year expenditures? To the public, it doesn't appear that way. If you're up here for years on end, you see it that way. The superintendent sees it that way. But we're a public entity. The public does not perceive it that way. And two, how many people are coming to our county that does not understand how our district operates compared to the way, and trust me, the way we operate here is way different than districts up north. So I almost feel like this is almost a, kind of a hostile amendment to the policy based on my pulling consent items. Because, again, people ask me things, I'm not going to tell them what I don't know. I'm just not going to do that. I would rather have the discussion, because I can't talk to other people out of here, other than try to, you know, tell the public, this is how it's always been done. And now I'm not one of those, or it's on the website. I'm not one of those kind of people. I'm more, I'm looking at it, I'm going to read it, I'm going to study it. They can go on there, but they don't spend as much time on this as we do necessarily. So when I pull something, you know, initially, yeah, it's going to be new to both Richard and I, Mr. Tatum and I, excuse me. Um, so being able to pull an item for consent for discussion isn't just about me, it's about the people we serve. And that's how I look at that.
See, I, I can see your point. I personally think that that's on me to tell them not, because when we, when we run this, run this meeting, our, all of our staff members are currently working. Like, they're working during, so now we have to pull someone from the staff, from their job, daily job, to come and answer questions that we've already done a workshop win and they've been here to answer those questions. We have a chance to, us personally, outside of, of a meeting, have a chance to get our answers from the superintendent or in the board briefing. To ask the superintendent or, or Ms. Means to schedule a meeting with so-and-so so we can get more adapt to what is going on, et cetera. So I think sometimes it's on us as the board member to do that work and then go back and relay that to the, to the public, to the people. Not repeat the same, like, and I, and I go back to, again, I go back to like the projects, some of the, the projects that were happening. And granted, you, and I said this from the beginning, y'all are thrown in here in November. But these are projects that we, that were, were talked about and decided like a year ago, and now we're going through the motion of actually putting it into place. So a check has to be written to someone, and that's why it's in a consent, because it was already done. So if the public were to ask me, well, what is this money we're spending at Palm, Palmetto High School? I would, I would have to, I would tell them, this is what we're doing. If I don't know, I would go back and do the research and, and get those answers to then go back and tell them. There's so many times, I'm sure you already have it, and you already have it, too, everybody does, where people ask us questions that we never cover in a, a, a meeting, right? And so that, that would, that, that's my point with the, with the consent, is that those items are there because we've either talked about them before and it's already been passed. Um, and if, if I don't, the, the, the consent, those consent items, to me, that's not the education time, is not during that meeting. The education time was before, when we talked about it at a workshop or things like that. That, that, to me, is the education time for the public. I mean, that's just me.
I just wanted to explain that if we pull consent, or any of us, not just me, the process is, we would do a motion to amend the agenda to pull a consent, get a second, and then the board would vote. For, according to legal, you would have to do that for every consent item that any individual board member would want to pull. Okay, I just want to be clear of it, of the process.
Do you have anything?
I had a question from Mr. Die. What is your opinion of this policy change, this recommended policy change? Do you have one? Is this just like a board way of work, or is there really a Roberts rule, right or wrong here?
I think it's a, a board decision on just how you want to handle your meetings.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you're complying with, with the rules of order, how you're discussing, how you would handle it. So.
Right, as long as it's an agreed upon procedure that we decide on one way or the other.
Yeah.
It's, it would be fine, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Um, with that, um. While I agree that I do not think it's a good practice to continually pull things from consent during a board meeting, I think it really, it makes us look unprepared. Um, and, um, I think it can, I think it can be misused. I really do. I think that there's even political games that can be played. And while I, I, I agree with all of those things, which I think is driving, at least Mrs. Foreman, that's my guess. Just, because I know Mrs. Foreman. I could be wrong. I won't put words in your mouth. But, um. I do believe that this policy should be as it stands. And my opinion of that is because I think that this shows respect to every single board member as it stands. Um, I think that every board member should respect each other and our time and not misuse this. But I do think that, for me, it is, it is a sign of respect that if you feel uncomfortable with something, or you feel uncomfortable with something, that we take it down and we have that discussion. I don't want it to get misused, and I think it can and has been misused. Through my six years on this board, I've seen it misused. And I don't like that part of it. Because I think you should walk in here, as Mr. Choate has said, and already have your questions answered. You shouldn't be asking them here. I also don't think that our business meeting, which is what it is, is a time to sit and make sure all the, everything gets put out to the public, because we can do that at any time. If anybody reaches out to me, I don't wait until a board meeting to answer their question. I do it then. If they have a question about number three, I'll get the answer way before the board meeting, because they deserve that answer as quickly as possible. Not when I can sit here and ask that question. So while I understand the concerns, and, and it can add to the time of our meetings when it really is a normal business item, you're right. I've been sitting here for six years. I've seen the same things come up six times. There are things that I've learned about that I'm like, oh, I had no idea what window glazing was. Learned that my first year, now it comes up every year. I'm like, cool, I know what that is now. But it took me time to learn that, right? So I get that. I totally understand that. But in the same respect, when that came up, I sat down with the superintendent and said, what is window glazing? Didn't know. So, while I, I understand Mr. Choate's point specifically about, at the time to do that is before the meeting, you should get your answers before the meeting. Um, I do think that allowing a board member to pull it without a vote is a sign of respect for every single board member. And likewise, we show respect to each other by being conscientious and respectful of each other's time. We're not using this dais to play any kind of political stunt. We're not using this dais to make ourselves look a certain way, because that's not what this is. We are a board, we are a body, we are a team, and that's what this is. This isn't, oh, but I want to show I'm looking, I'm doing this, or I want to show I'm asking that. That's not, we're not a show. We're not a show. It's a business meeting. We are here to do business. If you want to answer those things, if you want to have a town hall, if you want to have those things, do them. I respond to people all the time. I've gone out to the community and answered their questions. I, I provide everything I possibly can, especially to my civic organizations in my area. I provide all the information, because that's my job. Not doing it during a board meeting, because this is the business part. There's a whole community part. If there are times where you want to make sure something is said and it's on the consent, you can say it during your time, um, during, at the end of the meeting, where there's board comments. Or you can ask the superintendent. There's been times where I've said, hey, just so you know, I'm going to look at you and I'm going to want you to address whatever this was. I tell her beforehand. I may not tell her what to say, but I'm like, I just want you to know, I'm coming at you for this, because she should know. She should always know, hey, I'm going to say, what is this? And she's going to have to say what that is so the public can hear it. So there are times where that's going to happen, but it doesn't mean we have to pull every single thing in order for that to happen. There are more efficient ways for this board to function. Even so, I think that's a sign of respect. So I'm personally not in favor of changing that.
May I respond to that?
You want to let her rebuttal before you talk? You're good?
Yeah, I have some things to say, but I'm, I'm in listening mode.
Well, the, the sign of respect, um, if you make an amendment to the agenda, you can state why. And as a sign of respect, the board will approve it or not. But if you come in and you say, I want to pull three, and then you go, I want to pull five, I want to pull seven, um. The board needs to be able to weigh in on that, because it's changing the operation of the meeting, you know, so.
Can I point out one thing?
Yeah.
Sorry, we were both on Speech and Debate Club. Could you tell? I'm just going to point out that, um, in doing that, it will actually allow, lead to even more discussions and arguments to approve the agenda. Which is a time where our boardroom is full of community members and students. And instead of just allowing it and then we have that discussion later when that item comes up, we are going to end up having a debate about every single item. When it comes up in that agenda, when the room is full of community and, and students and parents. I really think that will look unprofessional.
Well, I think it looks unprofessional to pull multiple items from consent.
I agree with you. I said that. I, I think it, it makes us look unprepared. I'm not disagreeing with your point. I'm saying this will worsen it. I'm just going to give an example. When I was chair, I had a standing rule of whatever you wanted to add to the agenda, as long as you got it in on time, it got added. No questions asked. It got added because the board was going to vote on it. No questions asked. If you wanted it, it was there. Prior to that, there was a chair that didn't do that, that wouldn't add things. And what would happen is, somebody would bring it that day to the meeting and want it added, because it didn't get added before, and it would lead to more debate. Whereas if I just allowed it, there were times where nobody voted for it. It never got a second. It was put on the. got a second. It was put on the agenda, there was no debate, right? Because it got put there. But it never ended up even getting a second. The board never even took up that crazy, whatever that thing that was, the person put on there. Sometimes it's just more efficient to allow it to happen and allow the board to deal with it as it comes, than to have that debate at the moment, because that makes it longer, and in the long run, it's going to probably succeed. I mean, if a board member says, you know, I don't feel comfortable with number seven, really, that's all the board member has to say for me to go, okay, let's pull number seven.
But what, but what's happening is, they're saying, I don't, um, I don't understand or I have questions about number seven.
Mm-hmm.
And we have had an opportunity to get those questions.
I agree with you.
So if we can agree entire, among us, that we're not going to pull items from consent, I, I don't know that we need to agree on it, but, um, we can't be doing this every meeting. I'm just, I'm just saying, it's just, um, um.
I personally would be more, almost more in favor of saying, you don't, we don't pull consent items at the meeting, because, and that you have all, you have the whole Monday, every, and just allow it to be stated. I, because I do see what Ms. Messenger is, is saying about how it can make it even more of a, of an issue to process. Mr. Tatum, I know you've been in listening mode.
I've been listening to Mrs. Messenger a lot, and the, in the immoral words of Patrick Swayze, ditto. I, I, I hear, I hear, I hear Mrs. Foreman's concerns, and you're right. I mean, anything, any policy could be abused, any way of doing work could be abused. But I was thinking through this. Number one, if we didn't have the sunshine laws, I'd be more comfortable with it if I could talk to people in advance and say, I have some concerns, and work those out, and then I don't have to pull the consent item. But because of those, we can't do that. And number two, I mean, I haven't, I haven't yet asked to pull one from consent, but there might be some time over the weekend where new information comes to light. Like, for instance, what happened between the last meeting where we had about the book thing, where we saw the memo. And I agree with Ms. Messenger. What, what will happen is, I, I was kind of thinking through this, and how it'd actually play out in reality. So some, so I say, I'd like to pull a consent item, and maybe somebody gives a second. And then, okay, Mr. Tatum, why do you want to pull the consent item? Well, I, I found some new information over the weekend. Well, what information do you have?
No, you can't do that.
Well.
You can't, you can't give that.
You can't. Well, there's discussion about why do you, wouldn't there be discussion about why do you want to pull the consent item?
That's the, that's the issue.
That's the issue, right?
You would say, you would say, I have new information that I think the board should hear. That's all you have to say. You don't go into what that new information was, or, you know, am I correct, Mr. Dai, on that? That, that's?
Go into it during the time of.
That's the parliamentary way to handle that?
Well, when you're in discussion, there's not a whole lot of limitations on you.
Because I might wonder, well, what, what information do you have? Well, uh, I, it might be relevant, and it might not be relevant. I, I, because I would ask, well, I, it's just some, like a Ms. Spray said, I have new information I'd like to bring to light. Okay, well, whether I'm going to vote to, can talk about it or not, well, Ms. Spray, what information do you have? Uh, well, I found some figures I think are wrong, the, the numbers don't add up in this column. You see, we're going to have, we're going to have the discussion anyway, just like Ms. Messenger said, so might I just pull the item and go have the discussion at a different time, instead of backing it all up front? That's my, I'm just watching it play out in my mind, and what Messenger, Ms. Messenger said about, we're, it's, we're going to end up having the discussion anyway. Just pull it and talk about it later in, in new business. There's, there's pros and cons on either side, but I just see it playing out very close to how Ms. Messenger said, so.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I, I do, I think initially, I was on board. And I, and I do think it would just add a little more back and forth. Me, I'd say we can't pull consent items, period, um, because you've had, I mean, we, we get our, our briefing, you know, you've got seven to 10 days before the board meeting. Before that Friday, before the board meeting, you pretty much have seven to 10 days with that item, with that stuff. And I want to make sure, though, that, you know, although we can't talk to each other, if this is an item on like construction, like a building construction item, we can absolutely either get it from the superintendent. If she doesn't know, say, go talk to Mr. Rinaldi, et cetera. So we can definitely ha- have our, have those things answered of like the type of the project. We obviously can't talk to each other. That's a whole other issue. But we could definitely get more, if Ms., if the superintendent cannot answer it, she'll direct us to the right person who can. And I think, I mean, I don't think, a, a time, there's ever been a time where I didn't have my answer by the meeting. Um, so, I mean, you really want to change it, I, I mean, I could say, pull the thing all together, but, that's a whole other topic of what you're saying.
How would we, I mean, I don't mean to go to extremes here, but how would we handle a situation where there's some contract for $500,000 to provide painting services? And so, that's on the consent agenda, we're painting buildings, fine, whatever. And someone over the weekend sends me an email and says, hey, Mr. Tatum, I found out, I, I think there's corruption going on here. I found an email, I, I did a public records request, and it looks like Mr., you know, one of the board members, who knows, it could have been me, but a board member was colluding behind the scenes, or they're going to get a kickback or something, and I found this out over the weekend. We need to look at this before we can prove this contract and write this check. I want to address these, this accusation of corruption that's going on, or accusation of ethics. But if, if I can't pull, I mean, that's the kind of thing you would pull up from consent agenda for. But what, what's the procedure to do that if, if, if it's just on the consent agenda, and it's either up or down? How would we go?
So I would go to Monday, the first thing Monday, and I'd be calling the superintendent. Actually, I'd probably call the superintendent before Monday. So, a, and, and that would be something that I would say, this needs to be looked at and answered before we get to that meeting. That's obviously a really serious thing, you know what I mean? Um, and it absolutely could happen. Yeah, you're absolutely right. Um, I, I guess I don't know the answer to that, and I see what you're saying. If, if we never had the chance to pull it, then that could very well go to the table. But me personally, my answer to that, me, what I would do, I would be on the horn right away and say, listen, we got an issue, you got to look into this right away, right now. Yes.
I, I just, I've had similar situations where there was something that I had massive concerns about. And, um, I went to her and I said, and it was, I had said it, but, um, I don't know, there's a long story. Anyway, so I went to her before the meeting and I said, I just want you to know, these are my concerns. I'm going to vote no. Here's the reasons why I'm going to vote no. I have all these, and I gave her a whole, my whole list. She removed it. She didn't, she doesn't, she would, she, she straight up said, if you have any concerns, it's not going to be there. And it got removed. So if you have those concerns, the faster you, you get them addressed, the better. Waiting until a board meeting is not the most efficient thing to do. You can call her and say, hey, I have concerns, or go to her and say, hey, this is my list. I'm going to vote no. Here's my reasons why.
It could happen.
What would you like me to, what, what are you going to, you know what I mean? Like, you know, I'm not going to dictate what's on the agenda. I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do. I'm voting no. Here's my lease, my list, you know?
It could happen on a Sunday night. It could happen on a Sun, on Monday, the Monday, but it's, it's Martin Luther King Day, and no one's available to look into it. I, I, I just, it's, it's, it's a good provision to have, and I go back to what you originally said, it's a good provision to have, as long as we are professional and don't abuse it, that there might be situations where we need to have this ability, especially since we can't talk about these things in advance, you know?
Another option, because you asked for options. Another option would be, when we get to approval of the agenda, you can say, I move that we table item number seven. And it just gets removed, or I move this, it's removed from, you don't have to, it doesn't have to get moved, it can just be removed. You know what I mean? There are other options, other than I'm going to move it so I can ask a question. Like, that's not, that's different than what you're saying. What you're saying is, there's something more severe happening there.
Yeah.
Well, when there's something more severe happening there, I'd like for it to get tabled. I'd like for it to get removed. I'd like, there's a lot of other things you could do, other than, well, I just want to, I'm just going to, you know, I'm going to ask these questions in public. No, I'm going to make sure my answers, my questions get answered, because I don't feel comfortable voting on that, which, that's valid, you know? You should not vote on it if you don't feel comfortable.
There are different levels of that. There's corruption, and then there's something that I, if I could ask a question in a new, in a non-consent item way, I'm, oh, I get it now. It's all, it's all taken care of, thanks. I just would like to have that option. And I, I haven't done it yet, and I, it would be very, very rare that I would do something like that, but I'd like, I'd like to keep the option.
Exactly.
Available.
I, I, I think, I think it seems to me that there's no.
There's no appetite.
There's no appetite to change it.
Okay.
But thanks for bringing it up.
Well, and.
And it's a good discussion.
It is a good discussion. Yeah, yeah.
And, um, what was your second thing you had? I forgot.
Oh, the second thing was the Citizen Financial Oversight Committee. Um, and I'm proposing that we change, uh, their charter under a composition of committee to, um, that the union representatives, um, should not be voting members.
Was that, was that in our draft with the thing? No?
No.
Okay.
No, no. And I guess this would, I could do this as a motion at any meeting, you know, or just have it added to the agenda for a meeting. But, um, but the superintendent asked that it be.
Bring it up here?
Bring it up here.
And so say.
What I'm, what I'm saying, okay, what I'm saying, oh, thank you. I mean, you are, you are way ahead of me. Okay. Under a composition of committee, the last sentence of the first paragraph, okay, where it says, notwithstanding the foregoing, the president of the Manatee Education Association and the president of the local chapter of the American Federation, blah, blah, blah. Um, uh, okay, that they're standing members of the committee. Their attendance at those meetings is incredibly valuable, okay? And actually, I'm going to pin this one on Mr. Nelson. He brought it forward, said, it's a conflict of interest. And I don't disagree with that. And so, um, I, I want them on the committee, but I don't think they should be voting members.
I'm going to chime in on that. Not just Mr. Nelson has brought this to people's attention, this has been brought to my attention over the years. Anyone that receives benefit from a committee should not have a vote. So they're basically voting on what they're getting. So I would support that change to the charter wholeheartedly.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree.
All right, I'll put it up.
Put it on the agenda to amend the charter?
Just so that I don't debate this later. Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I went to one Citizens Financial Oversight Committee, and I saw those people voting. I had, I had that thought, like, don't they get benefit out of this? Isn't the village directly tied to their pay? How is it that they get to have a vote on this? So, yeah, I concur.
So just to be clear, their vote is to ensure that the money is spent, how this board has determined it should be spent. They have the biggest. It is more important to them that anyone else, that that money gets spent the way that this board has said it will get spent. They're not determining where it's getting spent. They're making sure that it got spent the right way. They're not saying, oh, I'm going to benefit from voting on this one. They're not. It already happened. They're just making sure, there are checks and balances. They're just making sure it went to where we said it was going to go.
Sure.
They're not making the financial decision.
We, we.
We already did. They're just making sure that that financial decision was followed through. And they have the biggest reason to want to be there and make sure it was exactly followed how we said it was going to be followed, because we all got, we agreed with them on it. So they, they have nothing else. They are not determining how much money they get. They're not determining where things go. They're explaining where it went. That is it. Not making anything additional from that. So I personally don't agree with that change. I mean, clearly the board does. I don't want to debate it later, so I'm saving you time. I'm debating it now. I don't, I just don't agree with that change, because I don't think that's actually logical. I think that they have the most, they have the most in it.
Sure.
To make sure.
Loser game.
But they're still on the committee.
Right. But I, I do agree with your point, that they are not making the decision on where that money is spent. We did. And then we're asking them to make sure we, that it's actually being spent correctly. So I do understand what you're saying. I have opinions about the C-Foc, but I'm not getting into it. Go ahead.
Rebuttal time. The, um, when, in matters of conflict of interest, um, or ethics in this case, sometimes there's the appearance of being not independent. Okay? The fact that we've all heard from people, you know, that, that, why are they voting? There's an appearance that they're not independent. I understand what you're saying, and, and I hadn't thought of it that way, you know, about, um, about the, uh, what, but what they're voting on. They've got other ways to let us know that they disagree with what, what they see, what, the way it's being spent. As far as I know, the only thing that they're really voting on, um, throughout the year is their final report. And they're at the meeting. They weigh in on how things are worded. They, they contribute to the, to the content and in meaningful ways. But I don't like the appearance of them voting for it.
So real quick, so I'll, I'll say something real quick.
She wants a final.
I know, but, but, um, I'm going to move on, because I think we're.
It's fine.
But just, I do think, though, that I almost put them as the same as the CFO, right? Um, when, obviously now it's Rachel, but there's no vote for her, right?
Right.
So I'm almost seeing the same token. Like, they're there, so, so they're, that's almost the same level. Like, I see what you're saying, but I, I think there's a consensus on, on it, so, yeah, let's put it on the next board.
There is a consensus, but I disagree with that.
That's okay.
Because the CFO really actually does make those financial decisions, and the union leader doesn't. There's actually a significant difference there. I don't think, I don't see them in the same level at all.
Well, as far as. Okay, that's fine.
It doesn't matter. There's already four votes. That's why I'm saving you the debate later. I'm saying it now.
Um, yeah, what was your thoughts on the email?
So this is the idea, so we all get emails. I'm probably, I'm kind of asking in my mind that, of the time I spend on school board business, thirty, forty, some days, fifty percent of it is responding to emails. And it's, uh, you know, Basha Elementary School, my child is arriving to school late consistently because of the bus, or my child is not getting the ESE services they deserve, whatever that might be. And so I'd really just like to, to help us all cut down on our workload, is that if, if the school's in your district, then you respond and say, I'm the, you know, District Two member, your school's in my district, I'll be handling this for you. And that way, and that way you have it. And then there's certainly going to be situations where, for some reason or another, someone emails me, like, I've had people not in my district email me personally, one-on-one, and say, I'd like you to deal with that. Okay. But in general, we handle the, the school issues within our district, and then unless there's a, a reason not to. And then if it's something from an employee of the district or something, then we'll handle those one-on-one, and we'll just say, which one of us would like to take it. But I'm spending a lot of, you know, people are, Mrs. Jones, who emailed all five of us about her kid arriving late to, you know, with the bus every day, you're probably responding, I'm responding, you're responding, you're responding. And I'd just like to say, that's the way we're going to do business.
Actually, I, I'm okay with, um, like, when we're all included, like that. At least maybe we can say, uh, you know, thanks, or I got your email, and, and Mr. and Mrs. so-and-so is going to take care of it, because you're in their district. I guess when it's singular, though, you don't know what, you know, if it's to you, then, you know, you'll absolutely respond. I do think, though, we have to respond, or at least me personally, I respond to everyone. I think that a response has to be given, and maybe it is given, oh, you're in Mr. Tatum's district, you know, he'll be, he'll, he'll take care of it. If not, let me know, whatever, right? I'm okay, I'm okay with, with, with that. Yeah, I mean, I don't have a personal problem.
Maybe a better way to do what you just said is, dear Mrs. Jones, I noted, thank you for contacting the board members. I am your District Two member, and I will take care of it. And you, I guess anytime we hit reply all, we.
We hit reply all.
Yeah, we have sunshine. Okay, yeah. And you're right. Dear Mrs. Smith, uh, your, your school is in District Two, uh, Mrs. Spray will be handling your issue. Thanks for, thanks for contacting me. And then I can kind of put that one in the archive.
Sure.
And I don't have to deal with it. Yeah, okay.
Or, or if, I mean, I feel like, too, though, if you, if you know the answer, you go give it. Like, if you knew, like, I got called today at 6:00 a.m. with bus, we.
I did too.
There's a bus shortage, twice, actually.
Yeah.
Uh, my kids don't even ride the bus. But, so thank you, Mr. Wagner, for, um, keeping us all informed. And so, uh, but if I knew that, if, if that was replied to all, and I knew the bus was going to be late, because I got that call, I could easily just say, I'm uneasy things, I think.
Sure.
Whatever. But if it's something that you've got to really look into, dive into, I'm okay with, as long as we all are okay with saying, each person's district, take it. But that's, that's just me.
Thanks. I have Palmasola.
Congratulations. That was in the back of my mind the whole time. What is?
That was, that was your, that was your intent. And actually, no, I, I, because I, I'm behind, because there are so many. But, um, but yeah, I, um, I, I will respond to all the Palmasola emails.
Do you agree? Do you agree?
If, if one of us doesn't follow through on an email, if one of us doesn't, you know, it's our district and we miss it, or we don't know, how do we know what district it is? It's gonna make the entire board look bad. Far better that somebody get emails from three of us than to get zero.
Well, what happens then, though, is that, like, I'll email, I'll email Ms. Saunders and put Amanda on the courtesy copy, so she'll get it from you, she'll get it from me, she'll get it from maybe Ms. Spray, now she's got three. I understand what you, so again, in one of those cost-benefit things, you know, I mean, it's very time consuming, so you're right, it could be that one slips through the cracks. But time, cost-benefit analysis, if it does, then the person will email back and say, you didn't email me, if it's really important.
No, they don't, they go on social media and say, the school board never answers their emails.
Yeah.
They never get a response.
So we'll spend, I mean, I'll spend 150, 200 extra hours of my time this year responding to emails that I don't really need to because if some, if, if, we just had this rule where, look, if it's in your district, you just take it. And one of them slips through the cracks and it gets on, then I'll grab it and I'll go, oh, it was mine in District Five, dear Mrs. Smith, I'm sorry I didn't respond to your email from 30 days ago, but I'm on it now. Thank you for bringing it to my attention on Facebook, we're got it. And it saves me 150 hours of work over the course of the year, you know?
I do say this, just as an idea, I always, when it's a group thing and it is, let's say, like, it's a major issue, you know, something that I don't know the answer to. I, I do write Ms. Means and just say, have you had anyone look into this? And then that way, she's the only one getting the email, she says, oh, yes, Mr. Tatum responded and Ms. Saunders, and then I, then I'm done, then I don't do anything with it. Because I know someone's taking care of it.
But you still gotta do that.
But I still have to do that to Ms. Means, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but if the, the five of us are emailed and Mr. Tatum has responded and Amanda let, you know, and, and copy to Amanda, the individual who has emailed us expects or wants to hear from all of us. You know, they don't want one person handling it.
Is that efficient, though? In the sense of?
Yeah, I mean, no.
It's public, they are our.
Well, do they want, do they want all five of, they want all five of us to hear, but what they want is someone to address their problem. I don't, if I had, if I emailed, if I was a citizen and I emailed the board, I don't want five people to email me back, I just want someone to hear me and grab my problem and take care of it. But if, that's what I, that's what I really want, I just want, hey, I'm blasting this to you, would one of you grab it and?
I want to appear responsive.
Okay.
The board to appear responsive, I don't want to, for one thing, it's gonna take time to look up and see whose it is, you know?
I definitely don't know.
It's usually my kid at whatever elementary school, it's pretty, pretty quick.
Yeah.
I'll be the first to admit that I'm probably one of the worst about responding to emails. When you get hundreds a day, you try to pick the ones, when you have 200 about Palmasola, most of them are all the same questions, save the school, save the school. You know, when we're here at a board meeting, you know, we're talking about whatever the topic is at the same time. I'm just being truthful with everyone, I'm probably the worst about responding to email, emails because of the magnitude that I get. Because it's, we all have different emails, it's not, it's not district life that we have, we have personal lives as well, so.
Well, now that I think.
You don't, oh, my goodness.
Now that I think about it, though, sorry, I know you want something to say, but now that, and I agree, we do get a lot of emails. But now that I think about it, if you don't, you could, you can go with the, let me just email the people that are in my district. And if Mary doesn't, then you don't, there's nothing on to you, right? So if you, if you don't respond to someone at Manatee High School, then that's okay, you, you're on the assumption that she is because she's gonna respond to everybody. Because that's what she's saying, right? So, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I don't know if we all have to agree on it, just maybe that's all you do. Because you're gonna, you're gonna think that somebody is gonna do it, you know what I mean? That's what I'm kind of get, that's what I'm kind of thinking, like, if you're gonna email everybody back because you want to be responsive, then good, we know that Mary's got it all covered and we're good.
Send her my stuff too, since she sees the light somewhere. Oh, yeah, actually, dear Ms., dear Mrs. Jones, your school is in District Three, that is Mrs. Foreman's district, I'll let her handle this.
Sure.
Thank you for contacting me, if you have any further questions, I'm always at your disposition, I'll just have that, like, copy paste.
Right, on the side, yeah, yeah, yeah.
For all emails, right?
Except the ones in my district.
Miss Warren, Miss Warren. Is that, I mean, is that, I kind of make, that makes sense.
I was gonna suggest that, I was gonna say, you know, if that's your way of work, that's totally fine, every, like, sitting up here, I've seen lots of different ways of work. I mean, there have been board members that won't respond at all unless you ask them a very specific question, or if you say in there, I want so-and-so to respond. I mean, everyone kind of has a different way of work, and if that's your way of work, then that's fine. I like to respond to just about everybody, it's a rarity if I don't. And the times where I don't are, well, there's some usual, well, there's, I won't get into that. But most of the time, if I choose not to respond, it's because I've seen the superintendent has responded and whatever she has said is what I would have said.
Okay.
Um, but to answer Mrs. Spray, you know, you're right, we, we are getting a good amount of emails about Palmasola Elementary. And in my experience, when we've had like a deluge of emails, which has happened with.
Masks.
Masks, school closures, the impasse, and health insurance and.
Libraries.
All the new schools opening, rezoning, renaming schools, all of those things is when you will get a deluge of emails, you just will. It's just the nature of it, when it's one of those big things where people have heard about it, you're gonna get a deluge and sometimes it's, it's full of misinformation and sometimes it's not. And typically, I will write a really short concise thing and I will read through the person's email, but I will not necessarily respond to every specific thing they wrote. I will just write something generic like, thank you for your email and feedback, and I will take it into consideration when the board discusses this topic. And that's usually what I'll respond to people, but at least they know, I've seen it, I've read it, you are heard. And, you know, you don't have to necessarily get into it like, oh, well, you're right about Palmasola, blah, 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 you don't have to, you know, you don't have to do that. But at least people, people do want to know that they are heard, they want to know, like, oh, that, that person did respond and they, they understand whatever that was, you know? So while, I remember when we did, which one was it? There was one hot topic where by the time I'd finished answering one email, I'd have at least five to 10 more in my inbox. Just in the time it took me to respond to the one.
That's what I'm hitting.
And I don't think we've hit that yet with this, I think we will, I don't think we've hit that yet with this, with Palmasola. I think we will, though, I think we will, when we talk about it, but there will be times where that happens, but you can come up with something that's generic to make sure people know. You know what I mean, it doesn't have to be like really, I always say, you know, thank you and I appreciate it and I will take it into consideration and.
You're talking about auto-response.
No, it's not an auto-response, I read every single one and then I respond, but it's not, I don't know how to set that up, I am the least techy millennial you'll ever meet, I have no idea. Mary probably does, I don't.
So it sounds like that Mr. Tatum is safe to not respond to schools outside of his district and someone else will.
That's all good.
That's all you made, that's all we really want.
Yeah, I just don't want, I, I'm trying to reduce my workload.
And you don't want someone to fall through cracks either.
And I want to reduce Mrs. Saunders workload, I want to reduce Mrs. Means workload, because imagine their email box, as if we're, you know, they're, I don't know how Mrs. Means does it, I mean, she must get 500 emails a day and somehow she keeps it all straight and does a good job and rarely misses one if ever. Yeah, that, that's all I wanted. The other thing I did want to say to the public is, we're not trying to discourage you, we are your customer service agents. So all this discussion may sound something like we don't like getting emails and who wants to get 300 emails a day? But the reality is, is we're customer service agents, keep bringing your problems to us, we are here to handle them for you, I don't want this ever to come off as being.
You just want it to be the right prompt, subprompt.
And, and minimize overall, all of our workload, so, so I can't, because when I really do have to deal with one, you know, if I've got 10 problems I gotta focus on, I'd rather, I'd rather pick one that I, this is an important one to me that only I can focus on and only I should focus because it's in my district rather than, okay, well, I got all these seven other ones that I gotta respond over here too, I'm just trying to focus my efforts and cut down on workload for everybody, but I got it, I'll do it, yep.
Just a reminder, if it, if it means enough to someone to send an email, it deserves a response, it deserves our attention, you know, because it's important to that person. Now, when, when we get these cut and paste templates, you know, when they come, those I, 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 I admit, I do not respond to those because that's just, you know, it, it's just trying to, you know, I don't know, but I, those are not effective communication tools, by the way, so.
One, one other, Palmasola is a district-wide thing too, by the way, so I don't want to discourage people, because that'll be a vote for all of us. Mrs. Jones's child is not getting on the bus is a, is specific to a person, so that's a different thing too, so, yeah, okay, great.
Great meeting, have a good Friday, have a good after, have a good weekend, we are.